Yeah, no, I appreciate it. So, anything I've been trying to put here, I push to you here.
It is eight fifteen. We'll call the meeting order of Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
My microphone is on.
We're facing the wall, Jerry. Morning, everyone. Number ones online. Do you have anything to add or remove from the agenda?
Yes, there are two items under County Administrator Report that I would like to strike for now. Get the board an update on where, what the status of those things are. The resolution for the county coroner appointment. And what else was it?
Let's see, there is. Is that the only one there?
Yeah, I thought there was one too, but now I'm looking and it didn't. But I'll provide an update, so it's not on there, so it doesn't need to be removed.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, I believe I got ahead of it.
Okay, okay. Sounds good. Anything else to add? Nothing. Motion to approve the agenda as amended?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Erica, second?
I'll second.
Dave, one in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Carrie. Whoever's had a chance to review the minutes of February twentieth, any corrections?
Mr. Chair, on page two of four, number two, executive search versus county charges. Is twelve thousand, is that the right price, or is it seventeen?
Twelve is correct.
Okay, and then.
For the attorney.
Yeah, and then on the next page, under land use environmental services, where it says request in the amount of, it should say three hundred thousand. There should be another zero there. And then under planning and zoning, where it says memorandum of understanding with Pelican River watershed and Combera watershed for permitting discussion. Do we want to word that a little different so it's more clear, like what discussion are we having? Or is it okay that way?
Well, some, we met the reviewer, MOU.
Yeah.
With the two watersheds.
Okay, alright. That is good. And then on the.
It's not, it didn't get, I mean, it was not, just maybe say, just review of the first word saying review, because there was no decision on it.
No.
Well, and I don't think, did we review it?
Well.
I think it was just a discussion.
It was a discussion, but I'll update you in my.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Where we went with it and so forth.
And then the last one I have under the same page, number one, under the public hearing, where it says obtained by Angoring. Should it say obtained from Angoring? And then who was retained by the colony, does that make sense if we say who was retained? Who was?
Written charges he received.
Would a better word than retained be like, I don't know, because I guess you'd say the attorney's on retainer, I guess, so it probably does make sense. But does that make sense by obtained by, not from?
Well, that's where I think, didn't she supply him with the written?
But from, not by though, right?
She supplied the actual written charges.
Yeah.
Well, address the written charges. I think he received from.
Yeah.
Makes more sense than obtained.
Yeah, yeah.
He received from Angoring, who was retained by the colony.
That's what I kind of thought too. That's it.
Barry, anything?
No.
Erica?
Nope, he already addressed mine.
I had nothing in there, so. Motion to approve minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes with the changes.
Motion by Dave, second, but Barry. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Carrie. Consent agenda, is anything on there? Somebody wants to pull?
Nope.
Nope.
I think everything on, especially on all the purchases.
Yep.
Boarded through the committees and so forth, so. With nothing, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Sir, a second?
I'll second.
Erica, further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Carrie.
I do think, for future reference, I think like that purchase of that semi should probably not be on consent. I mean, that's just too big of a dollar amount to be on consent agenda, and I looked at it, and I'm like.
I questioned it also, and.
I just think it's too big to be on consent agenda. But I wasn't, I didn't have any objection to it, but it's like, the public should hear some discussion on that.
Yeah.
You do have the information in the packet, but still.
Didn't we discuss, didn't we discuss it before? Last meeting?
We brought it up, brought it up, but didn't have a price.
At that time, we're, we still got the used quotes opposed to the ones, so.
Yeah, and we don't have no choice on it, but, because we're in the trucking business now, but.
They buy used ones.
Yeah, you can't, you can't, they don't do that anymore, you know? Any big company won't buy a used one because the emissions and the problems they have with them are just ridiculous.
And then by the time.
And you'll get your money back, Barry, you know what I mean? Except your truck will be under warranty, and you probably won't have any trouble.
How many miles, how many miles a year do we anticipate putting on a semi?
We're looking at like a hundred and fifty thousand between the two of them.
Seventy-five?
Yeah.
That's a rough estimate, though, we get through the first year or not.
But we're buying them on state pricing, the new ones, and as long as we trade them and take care of them, you know, if you look at any of these trucking companies, they're not buying used trucks. You know, somebody like me who puts on three thousand miles a year can have a used truck, but.
Dave, is anybody on open forum back there? Todd? Reporting correspondence.
I just had a couple of meetings this last couple of weeks, so of course we had our comp plan, which I thought went well. I'm excited to hear how the focus groups went. I've heard some feedback from people that attended, and it's all been very positive. I had Mahubi. Mahubi is looking for childcare providers to work with their Head Start so that they can increase their early Head Start enrollment. So, anybody interested in providing childcare, they have a pod model, so you don't have to have a childcare in your home. So, they're looking for people to do that, because they are below the required enrollment for their early Head Start children. They're busy with their tax season, they're helping, they have people at Mahubi helping people get their taxes done for free. Then I also had Becker County Extension. They received a bunch of donated seeds from Walmart. They, and they went through them all, sorted them, and they provided half of them to the food pantry and then half to the master garden. So, they're still at the food pantry, if you're interested in some. March twenty-third, they have their seed starting basic open house from nine to five at the DL Library. They also have, the plant clinics will start May first through September, and they're going to do just one day a week again this year from, on Wednesday from nine to noon. They have two hundred and twenty-five members in four H from a hundred families and twenty-five master gardeners. And that's all I have.
I can go next. John and I had a fair board meeting. They talked about, they have a, they have a big water problem with runoff, and it goes into one of their barns from the, what's that, the Flyers gymnastics building. And they're also going, the Flyer, they're planning on adding on to that, so they need to, the city and the Pelican watershed and the Fair Board are going to get together and figure out a mitigation plan to get that solved, so it doesn't run into their facility and get everything wet. Because it just washes right down through, because it's, the barn is lower than that.
Well, it comes off city property.
Yeah, it comes off city property, so the city is responsible for it. So, the county doesn't, it's not going to pay, you know, it's not going to cost us anything, because it's going to be their responsibility, and they know that. And that's part of the agreement that they have, but they got to come up with a plan to fix it.
Basically, there'll be three of them, City, Deer Lakes, Soylent Waters involved.
Yeah.
Pelican River watershed, and Fair Barn.
Yep, correct. And then they also talked about replacing bleachers. They got some quotes, they're pretty spendy, but their, their bleachers on the south end of the arena are probably not safe. If they got inspected, they wouldn't pass. So, they're exploring ways on how they're going to do that. So, that's kind of where they're at, but if they get it, if they do it soon, they can have them ready for the fair. Otherwise, they looked at a way to not, because they can't use those bleachers next year in the south half. They also did look at possibly having other options to use some for a year until they get some replaced.
The ones that come, actually come in like a semi.
On a semi.
They pulled them out for this year.
Yeah, for this year, that's kind of what.
Two thousand twenty-five would be.
The year they would replace them, yeah. And so they would replace the ones on the north end and maybe move the ones on the north end to the south end, that's kind of what they talked about doing. Because they have to do some maintenance on the ones on the north end anyway, they have to put new pylons underneath them. So, they might as well just move them at the time if it's, if it's cost effective. They also, and then last year at the fair was the last year their food vendor was, was their food vendor, so they have a new food vendor, but it is all, it was a person that worked for and with the old food vendor, so the trend, so they just signed the contract with the new one. So, it should be a smooth process, it shouldn't be a big deal at all. The one thing, another thing they're trying to do is they're trying to figure out how many people actually come to the fair. They can't, they can determine how many people go into the arena, because they sell tickets, so they can figure out all that attendance, but they don't really know how many people walk into the parking lot and walk in, you know, you can kind of guess a little bit by the number of people that ride rides and stuff like that. So, they're trying to come up with a way. They haven't figured it out yet, but it, but it's very helpful when you're applying for grants and when you're working with your insurance company to know the exact, know pretty close the exact numbers of what you're working with, so they're looking on that. Is there anything else, so?
Just, I did check with Cody or EDA, and there's some grounds available to help them on.
Perfect.
Keep working on that.
Yeah.
Bring it forward.
Sweet. And then John and I also had transit. We've had, we've been, we've seen a lot of each other lately.
Pardon?
We've seen a lot of each other lately.
Too much.
Too much, yeah. So, anyway, Kevin talked about how his rider ships are up seven percent so far this year. They're up four percent in the month of February. An update on the disposal of the transit building. So, there's a new transit person for the state, so he's pushing the federal government to get these papers signed. That's basically where it's at, it's still sitting on somebody's desk in the, in a federal office, not signed, so. And then he did talk about reaching out to Michelle Fishbach to see if she could do anything to try to speed the process up, since he's our representative in this area. But you got anything on that one, or?
Just on the bus purchase, the latest we got was actually ordered in twenty-one.
Yep.
The price is up thirty-two thousand.
Thirty-two thousand, yeah, so. And I had that too, yeah. And that's mainly because, not because necessarily just the bus itself, but all the options that go into the bus. They're, they've, I think, tripled or something, I think they went from like eight thousand to thirty-seven thousand. Yeah, but that's what happens when you don't have a bus. I also had a historical society meeting. So, there's, they have a new board member, his name is Dan Jacobson, he just got elected by the members. So, he will be starting the next, the next meeting, which will be next month, or this month, actually. And then they also found out that Native American artifacts, there was a, I don't know if it was a bill or whatever it was, some kind of legislation passed that no museum can display or possibly hold Native American artifacts unless the museum works directly with the local tribe. So, our executive director, Becky Mitchell, was discovering what she can do, and obviously she'll meet with the tribe and find out, but as of right now, she's not taking any, any Native American artifacts from people, and they're not displaying any, and she's going to, she doesn't, I'm sure by the next meeting she'll find out, but that's kind of unfortunate, because they have a lot of cool things that they have displayed in the past that they presently can't do. And then she had to turn down a, some artifacts that were coming from North Dakota that someone wanted to give to our museum, and she had to turn them down because she didn't know if she could take them. Hopefully that gets figured out, that's a, a, a problem. And then the last thing about the historical society is the WCCO came to the, our museum and did a story on our museum, and it's on, it's on wcco.com. Well, anyway, this is kind of an interesting story, I don't know if anybody knows about this, but Becker County possibly had this big meteorite, that it would have been the biggest meteorite in the state of Minnesota, so they, they needed to do some investigating to see if it actually was a meteorite. Well, they got it all the University of Minnesota, and they discovered it was not. Because they want, because if it was, then we were going to have, you know, it was going to be on WCCO and be all over the place, but anyway, so it's kind of anticlimactic. So, it's, they call it a meteor knot.
False alarm.
Yeah, yeah, so. Anyway, so that's kind of all about the museum. We had, like Erica said, we had the comp and planning and zoning, and there was, I thought it was a great meeting. I learned a lot, and I hope we can get that going really well, and I think it's going to be a positive thing for our county. DAC, they had a fundraiser on the twenty-ninth of February to fundraise money for a sensory room. So, a sensory room is a place where clients can go to relax and calm down. It's a, it's a, it's a smaller, there's a bigger sensory room, and then there's a smaller one, and this one is to raise money for the work on the smaller one. And it's a, it's, I don't know if anybody's ever been into the DAC, but it needs help inside. It needs some updating and some more stuff, more positive atmosphere things for the clients that go there, so. And I think it'll help a lot, and the fundraiser went really well. I talked to Sarah Hill, our executive director, and she said it went really well, so. The DAC is also, as of our meeting that we had two weeks ago, they have five new clients that'll be starting, and they have four new clients that are pre-approved. So, the client numbers are coming up, we're getting more people interested in the DAC, she's, they're doing an awesome job there. She's doing an awesome job of getting people, so it's great. Then Barry and I had a sheriff meeting. I think everything's on the agenda except for, there's a big problem in the jail with humidity. Like Sheriff Kleiner said, they have dehumidifiers all over the jail because the water, the humidity in the jails is bad. And it's not safe, people could slip on the floor. Eventually, the water can erode stuff, corrode stuff, so it's something that we have to look at and address and solve before it gets really bad, so.
And we had courthouse committee.
Oh, yeah, and we had a courthouse committee too, yeah, yeah.
It was funny, because we had only IT, Judy came in and, this is kind of courthouse, kind of sheriff.
Yeah, that's right.
And that was, they're on the agenda, so. So, I did have IT with through sheriffs and committee also. We had, I had joint powers up in Fargo. And we had presentation by Kirsten Larson, who's in the lands and mineral supervisor for the DNR. And they were talking about land acquisition, I think we've had that discussion in, in NRM also about they want to swap lands, of course. Then the discussion digressed into what's going on at the legislature right now, what's on our agenda for the tribal purchase, so we had that discussion. And they, I don't, they, obviously they're not the people that, the two DNR people that we had there weren't officially speaking for the DNR, but I got a sense that they weren't, they weren't on board with this land transfer either, so it was kind of, a kind of a good discussion. We discussed pill payments and also discussed the sales of lands that the DNR had on their website, and there was a couple that did not sell, but I had looked at that earlier, and it was pretty interesting. A couple, they were basically landlocked, but one was a river access, and I'm like, that would be a nice piece of ground to have. Then we had, NRM, Richard and I were at NRM. Discussed possible tram rate increases, and we thought maybe, we said, John, get John's input, and we had a lot of donations, so maybe keep them.
That's was my, for this year, and then like I mentioned to Steve, if we don't get a lot of spring rain, we won't even be open this.
And then we're, we're going to ask him about that dock there, Barry? Putting a dock there, or what do you think about that for people to get out? What do you think about the, the heavy pontoons?
For an access, or how do we get people to light?
Well, yeah, I've had that discussion, he was our major fundraiser person out there, Roger, and I said, some of the issues, the bigger pontoons, that's one issue, but when they come with ten, fifteen, two-hundred pound guys on, those coolers. So, if we have a way to unload them and then get them back on, going in the muskrat isn't so bad. But, and, yeah, I did, there's some nice used dogs, docks out there, I checked with Todd Simison, you know, for a little under three grand. Maintenance tree type dock, thirty-two feet long.
So, it wouldn't be a big deal to get off if they could.
No, you just got to get off and walk on a dock up to shore and then get up on top and probably have a, some cypress. Little bit of stairs there to get back on, and vice versa, and then go the other way.
We found out that we have a cemetery on tax forfeit land, and there's approximately, I think Mary said approximately seventy. And it's, and it's being, it's being cared for by Saint Mary's Catholic Church, is that correct, Mary? And we just said we would, the only thing we would do is, is mark the corner post on it to identify it as.
Where is that located?
Northeast half of the northwest quarter, northeast quarter of section thirty-one in Pine Point. We also had a discussion about recreation leases on cabins, and I mean, so much of this is just set up. We are just in limbo, I mean, we don't, with, with the possibility of what's going to happen at legislature for some of the land, it's, really puts us in a tough spot. And I don't think legislators have any idea what, what they're, what they're doing to our planning and our whole process here, but because so much of this land is within the boundaries of the, way to. Anyway. Toad Lake Mountain is, is still under negotiation for the purchase. Chilton Park, selective timber harvest, needed approximately twenty to fifty acres. Looking for how those funds get distributed. Anything else on NRM that you want to?
No, just that you brought up that if we're going to have a timber sale, we should have them guys take them trees off them trails and campsites if we're going to do that.
If we're looking at having a strip of campground, we want to kind of plot where we want.
Yeah.
So.
We got a RAC meeting, what, Tuesday next week, or Wednesday next week?
I'll be out of town.
Okay, so we'll, we'll talk about that there.
So, I think that was about it. We discussed the resolution that's before us today, and we, I mean, I brought it at that meeting, and that's how fast this went. We, so it's kind of unfortunate.
Going pretty fast. Barry, you did have Steve reach out to different, different people in the county that might be interested in that, different groups that, you know, that might want to have a voice in this land giveaway.
So, yeah, we, there's, I mean, the conversation's been going on pretty extreme, but if we can wait to discuss that, then.
Right.
Just on the, there's a meeting in Osage today.
Yep.
Two o'clock.
I don't, I don't think I'm going to be able to make it, but.
That one plus the, that one in Ogama.
At ten.
Oh, which one is in Osage?
Oh, no.
Osage has to do with the land deal.
Yeah.
They're both the same meeting, I thought.
I thought, I thought one was in Ogama was for the water.
Well, it has the pesticide farming issues and stuff.
Yep.
That's Ogama two.
Yep, I wasn't aware of one in Osage.
I think he was mixed up when he told me that.
I don't know what's going on with that either, then.
Oh, it's in Biju at ten-thirty for Clearwater County, or from Anomen County.
Yep, and then.
And then two o'clock in Ogama for Becker County.
Richard, you're going to go to the.
Yeah, I'm going to the one in Ogama.
What's in Osage?
That, I think he was mixed up, and then he sent me this to clarify it. He said Osage, and I'm.
Well, then I had, are you done, Barry? I had environment, the only thing I had was environmental with John. We're talking about the reuse programs, so there, this Better Futures from Minneapolis, they're actually going to try and take apart Kenny Foltz's house as much as they can, save as much as they can, he's getting a new house, so we're going to see how that goes.
Bring it out to the recycle.
Bring it, yeah, and they're going to bring it out to recycling and sell it out there.
Sell it for, like.
So.
Slumber, whatsoever salvage.
Yeah, and I don't know, they didn't say for sure, but like the cabinets, maybe some of the doors, or maybe some.
And they'll sell it for reuse?
Yeah, and I'm curious to see how they're going to take this thing apart and still.
It's a company that's, that does a lot, I guess.
Yeah, I guess they got a way of doing it, so we're going to, I'm going to watch it when it happens and see how they do it, but, because we do throw a lot of stuff in the demo landfill if we wouldn't have to, and building materials are very expensive now, so that's not a, that's not, I, I'm curious to see how that works. And we're talking about getting organics out at the landfill now.
That's, it'll come up on the agenda, Dave, that Green Corps person would be engaged to study that and try to get a handle on a program.
I want to get some pet bears, well, because they'd eat most of that stuff.
Bears?
Yeah.
We don't need any more bears.
Well, pet bears.
Pet bears, wild bears, bears are bears.
We don't need to know something, I think there's a shortage of bears, but.
I suppose you want wild pigs too, so.
You know, I'd like to taste one.
I guess they don't taste good.
Don't they?
I don't think so.
So, don't, don't, don't encourage them, because they will ravage us.
Yeah, I don't know, and then we're talking about that truck out there. But.
They also, Richard, researching on a floor sweeper for the Murph, because it's so dirty and dusty in there all the time.
Yeah, I guess the dust is just terrible in there, he said.
And where the?
Recycling area.
Yeah, and it's causing a lot of problems, so they're going to have to get a floor sweeper out there to.
So, they're looking at different ones and be bringing that forward eventually. Also, they're looking at, uh, solid waste storage, putting together proposals and seeking some state bonding. That just ties in with, there's more interest in recycling of mattresses from neighboring counties. And Steve, I think, is working on getting letters of support to go along with this. And if we can set that up and there'd be a lot of training on what mattresses, clean mattresses. You can't take a dirty, wet-soiled one and recycle it, but, uh, other counties have contacted Steve and it looks like pretty good interest out there to take them someplace, so. So, they'd be charged so much coming in and then stuff would be resold, so. Uh, I think that's all we have on environmental. The rest is on the consent agenda. Anything else?
No.
High Prairie Lakes Municipal Solid Waste, uh, not a lot to report there. Our January incinerated tonnage was over our monthly budget or amount. Will probably make up when we're shut down for two weeks in March 18th for repairs. Uh, we continue to move forward on an ash approval for MPCA on using in roadbeds starting in 2025. So, more to come on that. We've had, uh, our packet is full of about 100-page report from engineering firm and all. If you're a chemist, you're probably a scientist, understand some of it. But it is pretty clean ash. When it comes right down, you take the heavy metals out, which could be done right on site. Between a screen and magnet, they remove, remove a lot of the stuff that you wouldn't want for the roadbed, so. More on that coming forward. Uh, let's see, Fairbord Transit and had Parker River Watershed. Introduced their new attorney, actually out of a firm out of West Fargo. And more engineering has taken over the engineering for the watershed district. I believe it's the same engineer that works with Cormorant Watershed, that's a pretty good work, working relations, so. And we care to report, but we did move forward on meeting with the county and Rick Michelson, Terragatter, and their new attorney was sat in and had a lot of good points on permitting and inspections and working together where we can, so. And, and a few other ones scattered throughout, but nothing major on those. So, Wannigan Park went to their open house, uh, very well attended. And now they're trying to seek additional funding too, so supposed to respond to, put letter of support to several of the capital improvement, uh, people, legislators down there, so we're working on that, so. That's all I had. Anything else? There you go. Uh, any appointments?
I got a couple of appointments.
Okay.
Cole Skaline to the Planning Commission.
Is that a motion?
Yeah.
A second.
A motion, a second to reappoint Cole Skaline to planning zoning?
Yep.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Carry it.
And then the other one is, I want to make a motion to appoint Craig Hall to the Board of Adjustments.
Motion?
Yep.
For a second?
A second.
Do we have, do we have the terms? I mean, the, the, the.
Have to get them from Kyle.
Is this your, is this yours?
He's at large.
Yeah.
Is it up, you know?
Board of Adjustment?
Yep. I, I just would like to see if it's an at-large one. I'd like to see it.
Posted?
Well, I'd like to see it, um, at least have some knowledge that it's gonna be voted on prior to, rather than.
Yeah, I wasn't aware that there was.
I didn't know there was.
Any openings?
Do we move forward? Do you want more information, or?
I mean, I'm not gonna support it this time, because I, I just want to have some other options if there are people out there interested in. See if anyone's interested in at-large position.
What, how is it typically done? Like, is it typically when you have an art at-large position, is it, um, advertised?
Not really. You probably get some input from people that follow it a little bit and, uh, I know a couple of, or in the past, some at-large, they might contact commissioners and say, I'm interested, or this is just a reappointment, so.
I just, I just thought that, since it's, I'm on the, I think it's odd that I'm on the Planning Commission and I wasn't.
Board of Adjustment, though.
Well, still, yeah. I mean, I, I don't have any problem with, with Craig being on it. It's just.
No, if that term is up, then we need somebody to fill it. I have no issue with it either, so.
Yeah, I, I'm good with that. I, I don't know.
I think with that, I'll call for vote. Hall in favor?
Aye.
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 Close?
Aye.
Carry it. Probably in the future, we can just make sure we got the appointment and just see what term it is.
If we're, yeah, if we anticipate that that's an opening, just put it on the.
Usually, we get from Kyle list of stuff, and receive that.
And did Craig reach out to you, Richard?
Kyle told me about it.
Yeah, I guess it'd be Kyle.
I like, Craig does a good job. He's professional and it's hard to get good people to come and do it.
Yeah, I don't, the issue isn't with Craig.
No.
The issue is just I, I wasn't aware that there was one.
Yeah, probably, Carrie could just let Kyle know and we need something, just get it out to the full board or, unless, especially at the at-large ones. When it's in somebody's district, it's more local then, so. Okay?
Is Cole Skaline on your district?
Yeah.
I thought so, that's why.
Yeah, he lives all around, 149, 1 foot.
That's all for appointments? Okay. Carrie, why don't we start and we'll have to break at 9 for that hearing.
Okay. All right, so, uh, thank you. Um, first thing, I just wanted to update the, uh, commission is that I did attend the AMC conference and got a lot of good information. And I did push out the, the priority points of legislation that's forthcoming that AMC is supporting. As the board chair already indicated, he and I and Kyle met with Cormorant and Pelican Watershed representatives. And I, I felt that that, um, meeting was very productive. It was, uh, we were able to hone in on a couple of the issues that they really wanted to, uh, move forward with an MOA. With regards to specifically, um, the retaining walls and then the vegetation removal and what's required for replacement. And so, there was a lot of discussion about the differences between the county and the watersheds when they are overseeing some of those types of things. So, um, again, where we landed, you know, just an example with the retaining walls, which you probably already are aware of, is that one requires a conditional use permit and the other does it more through an administrative process. So, again, as we, um, kind of highlighted, those were probably the two main points. That what I would anticipate, um, would be coming back through in an MOA to, for clear understanding as we move forward, especially into the spring when people are gonna be doing some of those projects, so.
Carrie, add to that too, one of the issues, differences was, say, somebody cut some trees on the lakeshore. One has, I believe, a two to one or three to one replacement. And another one has one for one on approved. So, we're, they're coming together and agreeing on where it should be on all these differences. So, I think if something is gonna be better for, and some might be a little tighter, so.
Yeah.
But at least they're the same.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I think so. You know, we really talked, uh, extensively about consistency and, you know, having it, uh, more for the homeowner, you know, so that they're not caught in the middle between, you know, two sets of rules. The other, um, uh, point that probably came up was, as John had indicated, that, you know, when you take out trees, and then how many do you have to put back in? And then I asked the question, which I think then prompted, you know, then what are we requiring them to put back in for trees? Because everybody has a different idea about what that should be. So, um, you know, the, I, the comments were that we would come up with a list of trees that do well in this, in this area, and a list of, of those trees of what would be recommended or required for replacement. We also talked about the educational piece of getting information out about what is required as people move into, you know, especially the lake properties, as far as, you know, what you can or cannot do. And so, we talked about education of the, of the realtors as well as the landscapers that are, are doing the work. So, again, I thought it was very quick, but very focused and very, I felt very productive.
Yeah, I think, uh, a little on the landscapers, they should be, it's like Richard's installing a septic tank. You don't start without permit or know what you're doing. But, uh, most of my landscapers, you know, they, they should have permit in hand or some responsibility there. Because some have had to come back in and remove large quantities of rock that weren't put in right and just without, especially they did it without permit and so forth, so. Get everybody, like Carrie said, educated out there, what's expected of everybody, so. Same page, there are different rules for everybody.
Yeah, yeah, it went well. Next item I have to report out on is just wanting to update the board on our negotiations. They are moving along. They have been, we've been quite busy. I think we're about second round on just about everybody with the exception of maybe one that just canceled. So, we're, you know, scheduled this week and into, uh, next week, so those have been productive. And hopefully, we'll be moving to some, settling of some contracts in the very near future. Let's see. I had on the agenda and I did remove it, there's been, and I did write a draft MOU. There's been a lot of discussion through the Sheriff's Department and hiring for those deputies. It did get pulled just because we are, again, uh, working with the union to, and, and they do have it in hand, so we hopefully will have an update next board meeting with, with the status, the status of that. Um, the next thing that I did, as you are aware, that I did pull from the agenda was the appointment of the coroner. Fortunately, probably unfortunately, as I, uh, did a lot more research on that and had a lot of communication with MCIT with regards to the, the coverage for that individual. What it really prompted is a lot of legal discussions through MCIT statewide across the counties that have coroners. When they started looking at this, when I started asking questions about the coverage and how that extends to, uh, the appointment of that individual. It, you know, there's, uh, through, uh, state statute and bonding, it does indicate that, uh, that individual would fall under, under the county and whether or not there were issues, obviously, the county is ultimately responsible. But when they researched policy through MCIT, there were exclusions specifically stating things like, um, it doesn't cover anybody that handles dead bodies. So, that was the exclusion. And then there's an exemption to that exclusion that says the exemption is, uh, for law enforcement officials only. And then, uh, the next thing was that they will extend coverage to coroners or people that, excuse the language, but that handle dead bodies if they are, um, retired and cannot get that insurance elsewhere. So, it's been, uh, significant work in progress. So, really, um, what it's probably gonna come down to is, um, seeing if there's other options for insurance coverage for, at the coroner for appointment, or whether or not the individual that we have on our radar that has agreed to this has the option for coverage through her current employer that can extend here and the difference, you know, if they agree to pick that up. Perhaps the, um, amount, the dollar amount then could be worked back into the contract. So, yeah, it's, uh, it prompted a lot more questions than answers, unfortunate, unfortunately. So, as soon as I get that squared away, I will bring that back. I think that's all I have. Um, oh, uh, yes, I have one more item. Brian, uh, the county attorney and I did meet with DDA. And so, his executive search for his, uh, assistant attorneys will be going and posted through, um, their executive search here shortly. The final draft we reviewed, uh, end of last week and beginning of this week. So, hopefully, that will prompt some good candidates for, for him, for hiring. And the next item that I have for consideration is an on-call policy. Um, this was prompted or requested through IT for the need for on-call for their staff. And so, um, that is in your, that is included in your packet. That was taken through courthouse committee as well as the finance committee. Um, Judy specifically in IT just has budgeted for that. I did write the policy, uh, general, if there were a need in other departments that this may fit that need. We could certainly mimic that, um, but really, the, uh, at this point, the need that I am being informed of is through the IT department. So, I would be looking for motion to approve this policy, or if there were suggestions for modifications, I certainly would entertain that as well.
I think that one of my issues is it's, it's a very large expense.
Yes.
Um, so, for me, I think I would want to see, prior to us having on calls, like I know, I know we said that it's, it's budgeted through IT, but have we been, um, really shown like the need for it? Like what, how many calls are we getting on call? What are those calls? Are they really emergency calls? So, I guess for me, I would like to see before we implement, not necessarily this policy, but before we start having on-call people, I would like to see really the need for it.
I can speak to that and if you have, Judy, Judy's maybe in here.
Judy's hiding behind the pole.
Um, so really what prompted this, and Judy, you can speak to this as well, is that Judy is the primary person that's on call. And some of those questions were asked through committee. And I think her answer, and you can correct me, Judy, if I'm mistaken, but, you know, generally speaking, and, and we really did try to hone in on emergency. This is not a nicety, you know, hours if somebody's locked out of their computer. So, we did have those discussions and, and I believe Judy had indicated about four times.
In the month of February, and I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't keep track. It, it ebbs and flows. Um, they're always, the, the calls that we get that I would call emergency calls that are for on-call, in the month of February is four, and they're all, um, related to the sheriff's office, um, the tribal government PD. They're all related to, to, to PDs. And it's that they can't get into the criminal justice network because they all come through us. And the only way to fix that is to call, um, we fixed some, I think, I got two calls on President's Day. And, uh, so they had people that could not contact criminal justice, so my understanding is that puts them at risk. And so, that's why we've been on call, um, since I, really since I started, and I've been doing it. And it's just, it's, I'll be honest, it's just becoming too much for me to do every day for, so we do have on call. And if it's not worth paying for, we're gonna have to figure out a different way of doing it. Because I don't think we want to leave the criminal justice network unsupported, um, by, by, by us.
I would agree with that. I mean, I, I agree. Like, I think, you know, that, that is an emergency, but that's also a lot of money for us to pay out. You know, you figure $4 an hour times 16 hours.
It's about five, it's about $500 a week.
And that includes Saturday and Sunday?
That did, yeah. So, it's about, I think it's almost $27,000 a year. But I also added a little bit more in that budget in case it created some on-call pay that we had to pay. So, I did increase that, um, because we've always had some on-call pay, uh, or not on-call pay, uh, overtime pay. So, I increased the overtime pay a little bit in case we had people that came in in the middle of the night because there was an issue that had to get resolved. Again, I've probably come in, I would say, once a month. Uh, but the big issue that caused that, we have resolved. So, I don't anticipate we'll do that, but again, it's really for, um, it's for criminal, it's for, it's for police officers, for the criminal justice network. And we were pretty clear in the policy that if anybody calls, that their supervisor needed to call for them. So, we were. So we were very clear, we always, that's what happens. Now, when tribal government calls, I'll be honest, it's the supervisor on duty that calls that, you know, when they call from, from Clearwater County, it's the, the supervisor at Clearwater County, which is fine with us. We just want to make sure that they're, that they're not at risk.
And, and those types of calls, anybody on your staff can take care of?
The kind that we've had, if I can take care of them, yes.
Okay, I mean, I just want to make sure like they have the credentials and they can...
The, the, the people that will be on-call, they should be able to take care of it. It all has to do with, with connecting, it's connectivity. Now, there could be other things that are on-call and again, I am always the backup person for if we have to spend money, you know, if we have to contact a vendor and it's off-hours, we want, you know, the, the, those will be clear to the people there. And I'm also, um, because it's, it's very hard to juggle on-call and the best way I believe to do it is, um, when somebody is, you know, because you can get sick when you're on-call, well, you can't take calls if you're sick. Just, I'll do those calls. It's just easier than trying to figure anything else out. So for me, I believe in this enough that I think we want to make sure that we have criminal justice supported, that I will absolutely take those calls. I've already talked to, um, the people upstairs. One person was out sick, so I didn't talk to him yet, so. But otherwise, I think everybody understands it and, uh, I don't think it's going to be an issue, um, at all, as far as employees and being able to be on-call.
I guess for me, it's, I mean, I know, I know you said twenty-seven thousand. That's just for on-call. I don't know how much you, you budgeted for if they get called in. Um, I, and I think, I think it's a lot of money for us to spend for, for calls a month. With that being said, I don't know what the answer is. I guess I...
I think it's really the sheriff's department that would give us the answer. Is it important to them? Because if it's not, I don't have to take the calls, that's fine with me. I don't know. I assumed if they call, it was important.
Yep, and, and I, I, I agree it's important, but...
Erica, would you like more information and we can just table this this time?
Is there, is there any other options? I mean, if we hire Morris Electronics, are they gonna, are they gonna provide service for us after?
They're gonna just call me. That, we had them doing it and they just always called me, so what was the point of paying them to do anything?
Well, we certainly can't have Judy on-call twenty-four seven. I mean, you can't do it. You can't expect one person to be responsible for that and so, um, and I think she's been doing it for, since she's been here and I, and I, I think we owe it to her to give her at least a temporary solution to get this moving forward. And if there is a better solution, I'm all for hearing about it, but I don't, I don't know what it would be. I mean...
Everybody's got these problems, electric companies, propane companies.
I mean, we have, we have hits on us all the time. I mean, and, and it's getting more, more detailed and more, I mean, we had one, I called Carrie yesterday, I had one that said it was from HR and I don't know if anyone else got it, but it said, you know, you're, you know, we have to update your W2s, you know, can you check click on here and make sure they're right? And I, honestly, I was this close to thinking, this is from HR, but that yellow banner was on there and I'm like, wait a minute, this would not be here if this, so...
And the email was from HR?
Yeah, it says HR and it says, and, and your...
It was not for me.
Your website was, or the click, click on was, you know...
What did courthouse committee recommendation?
We recommend, it's budgeted for recommend moving forward.
It was budgeted for you recommend. Somebody want to make a motion?
I have just a bit of other information I would like to offer. You know, there was some benchmarking done on this of other counties, which unfortunately probably wasn't as helpful because really what I was hearing is that they expected their head of their IT to continue making the calls and, and weren't budgeted for it. So, um, they didn't really have any other solutions.
And Judy mentioned that when she's sick, but when she's not there, when she's not available, or if she wants to actually have a life after hours, I mean, you can't, no, you can't be out...
No, you can't.
You can't be, you have to be so close to them, it's not, it's not doable. I mean...
On-call costs money, that's...
If we want on, if we want someone available, we're gonna have to, have to pay.
Want to make a motion or...
I, I, I mean, I certainly want to respect Erica's position that it is, it is spendy. You can, we looked at the, we looked at the cost too and tried to, and, um, it, I don't know what you, what you can ask your employees to do if, if you don't, if you don't compensate them. I mean, because when they're on-call now, they're not going to be able to go out and, you know, they can go out and have supper, but they can't, they can't have a drink, you can't, you have to be so close to, you know, you can't go...
There's a response. I'm...
There's a response. Then one question I asked Judy before was, what do your employees think and she said that? Um, you had one that didn't...
That wasn't, I'm not a hundred percent sure wants to do it, but we have enough people to do it if they don't.
Yeah.
But yeah, I mean, I mean, that, I think it's also a lot to ask for, I mean, if you're gonna do it weekly, that's once a, once a full week for your, your staff.
We haven't determined how we're gonna do it yet. Till it's approved, there's no reason for us to figure out exactly how we want to do it. Um, I, you know, they might want to do it every two weeks, want one week, every other day, they might want to do it once a month. I don't know what that answer is, because I, I don't think I, I don't think that's my decision to make. I think that's their decision to make as far as people that are gonna do it.
Hey, wait, Barry, did you make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the on-call emergency policy.
Motion by Barry, second by Richard to approve the on-call for IT?
Hello? Okay.
What is that?
Maybe they're being, waiting for the public...
Some friendly person.
Hello, this is, this is Brent with Facilities.
Oh, it's Brent.
Brent, okay. Do you have a comment?
I do have a comment. Um, is Facilities involved with this?
With what?
Strictly IT right now.
Um, I, I'll address that. Brent, um, when I wrote this policy, I wrote it, uh, for countywide, if there were a need in other departments, I think that that can be visited. So if you're thinking of your department specifically, I think we can have that discussion whether or not this fits any needs that you may have as well.
Okay, well, thank you for that, but I just want to reiterate that since I've been here for seven years, I've been on-call for seven years. So let's, um, let's maybe look at other departments too. I appreciate the, the recommendation.
Thank you.
Yeah, Brent, you're not the only one. I have calls from other departments that are in the same situation, so, but this is strictly written, Brent, this time, approved for IT. Any other discussion?
Well, I think, I think this is also a perfect example of if we have other age or other, um, departments that are now questioning if they should be called for, for on-call, what is our criteria then? I mean, we don't have any criteria right now to prove that it's, you know, that how, how much it's gonna be, how many calls, so...
If I'm, if I'm right, this, we were looking at approving the policy, now we'll have to approve, now we'll have to come back and approve the employees, is that correct, or the department?
That's what I would recommend.
I think this is about emergencies, is what I'm seeing here, other things, you know...
But what constitutes an emergency for, if we don't have any, if we don't have anything in writing of what an emergency is?
That's to be worked out with each department because...
And I think each department looks different about what the emergency is. And I think we have a good definition of what the IT definition of emergency is. That's why we're starting with the IT department.
I just don't, I just don't want to start opening a can of worms where now we're paying every department on-call four, four dollars an hour.
And I think that's, I think it's individualized to departments and whether or not they have those type of emergencies as defined.
Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Pause. Carrie. Uh, so we gotta pause here for the public hearing. Public hearing for Minnesota statutes three forty-eight point four oh five for public comment and approval of on-sale, on-sale liquor license for Swanee's Pub.
Need a motion to open a public hearing?
Got a motion?
I'll, I'll make a motion on the public hearing.
Second.
Motion by Dave, second by Barry. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Could you introduce yourself and just tell them a little bit about your business?
Sure. Uh, I'm Brad Olick. I farm by Felton, Minnesota and have a cabin on Big Cormet and a couple of years ago bought the Swanee's campground on Middle Cormet. And with that being said, I guess we took down the old, the old bar and facility and the cabins and rebuilt the cabins and are in the process of building back the, the bar and restaurant. So I'm here to ask for, uh, the liquor license for that establishment.
Here you go.
Um, Mr. Chair, I think it's, I think we want to clarify, this is just for the liquor license. Now, the, the business itself, the restaurant and the bar are covered under the conditional use permit. So this is, this is just for, um, the state authoring, you know, the, the sheriff's department did research on your background and your credibility and, um, so I think this is a little bit, I know there's a couple of people here that are, you know, are concerned about the, what's gonna happen in the area, but I think this is just for the, the liquor license. And, and these, I mean, quite honestly, there's not a lot of input from us. The sheriff's done the research, it's basically a, is this person qualified and, and reasonable to get this liquor license? But I, I do know there's a couple of people here that might want to share some of their concerns about the overall business, but...
Oh, this is public comment. Anybody want to speak to this issue? Just come up and state your name and address, please.
Morning, Jeff.
Hi, Gary. My name is Jeff Mortensen and, uh, I live on Golden Lane, which actually is Brad's property, but we have an Eastman to use it. And, uh, I appreciate very much for what he's been doing with the campground as far as cleaning it up and, and, uh, making sure everything's updated and everything. I, I do have a few concerns. I've talked with some of my neighbors that aren't around right now. As far as, uh, how late will this be open at night? I mean, is there gonna be a lot of late-night noise? We've lived there for a long time, so we went through a lot of stuff with, with the old bar. And it, it got quite rowdy at times. The sheriff's department was there several times. And, uh, we just don't want to repeat of that as our main concern. We, we actually hope you succeed quite well, so.
Thank you. Thank you. Barry, that's more under the conditional use.
And I relayed, I relayed, right, this, this is just, this is just for the liquor license, but...
The off-sale.
The, the, the concerns are if you, if you violate, and I, and I think, I think you have a good reputation, I think it's gonna be, I hope, the same, that you're very successful and I think your, your initial project looks, looks very positive, so, um, but the recourse that is hap, that happens if you are just let everything go wild and you don't take control of things, um, is if, if there's enough complaints and this, this board has the authority to pull your conditional use permit for your, for your business. That would, you know, it's, it's not likely, but I mean, it, that is, that is the option that we have. So we hope and we anticipate you doing a great job out there. I'm gonna visit the place myself. Um, I hope you can, I hope you can get that channel opened up, the watershed, so I can come over from Big Cormet to dock on the side.
Good luck there with the DNR.
Yeah. But, but the concerns are there and especially, you know, I think, I think you've shown a real positive business sense and I think you know the, the negatives of letting, letting it get too crazy and, uh, I, I don't think that's gonna happen, I, but there's always concerns with new business, so. Um, I think, I don't know if Lori wants to speak at all or...
I guess with that being said, I could kind of follow up with that question as far as the campground there, where, you know, I was brought aware of some of the problems and concerns prior to us purchasing it and, uh, a couple of them left on their own and a couple of them left since. So, I mean, of the, I don't know if you want to call them the trouble...
Louder.
Yeah.
Party ear.
I feel we got a real good group of people, there's not really one in there right now that I would want to leave, so I guess that's, that's probably...
And I think with that business model, um, you've got a lot, I mean, there's a list of people that will get in, that will be respectful, so you don't, I mean, as a business person, you're, you're at an advantage, you don't have to put up with bad behavior if you, if you are tired of it, so.
So...
Lori, just state your name for the record and...
Lori Olson. I live on one four one one four Globestead Beach Road on Middle Cormet Lake. Um, I've been active in the lake association for many years and certainly our concern would be that this would change the atmosphere of the lake. And, um, we, our stance is we want to be good neighbors. We are excited to have a restaurant on the lake. I hope the french fries are real good. And, uh, most of us intend to go there. It's just that, uh, what I spoke with, with Barry, what I emailed Barry about is it has nothing to do with this gentleman or Swanee's. It is our entire area seems to be you could walk from bar to bar. We're getting a lot of bars. And I just wonder, I, I'm uneducated as to should there be concerns? Where do you go with the concerns? You know, if it changes the, not him, I mean, there's other bars in our area that disrupt people's lives. And, and I just wonder where you go with it? Do we just have another one? Someone buys a hunk of land and we just have a big loop like Cross Lake, Minnesota?
Well, I think obviously the sheriff's department is, is if you see, you know, illegal or activity, that the sheriff's department is the first place you can call. Uh, but if it's a business that's not showing, you know, is having those, if it's illegal, you can call the sheriff, but if it's just, um, then you call planning and zoning and, you know, ask, state your concerns and the complaint about, you know, garbage or, and they'll, you know, they'll investigate, so, um, whether it's garbage or bad behaviors or, um, whatever, whatever you would say.
Fireworks.
Fireworks.
Yep. That's a big deal. We can, we are concerned, of course, for Jeff. Jeff has PTSD and when those things go off, I mean, dogs, people with PTSD, we're concerned about that and it's certainly not just all from the campground.
Yeah, and I, and I think, I think hearing that, you can try to eliminate, uh, obviously the Fourth of July is a tough time to eliminate, but unless that, for that weekend that you, and I would, I assume your campground guests wouldn't want late-night, you know, those, those activities either, so.
Right, for the most part, there's, there's one or two that, yeah, I need to make sure that that is controlled.
Yeah, and I think if they knew the circumstances, they would probably be more than happy to, obliged by those, by your rules, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lori.
Anybody else want to comment to the issue? Hearing none? Call for a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by, motion by Barry, second by Richard, further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Point of order, we have to close the public hearing.
Close the public hearing first, yeah.
That was my motion to close the public hearing.
Okay. You can state your motion.
Yes, and Richard seconded.
I seconded.
Okay. I'll call the vote then, open the meeting.
To close the...
Close the meeting, open the reg, back to the regular meeting. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, now...
Now I'm making a motion to approve the liquor license.
I'll second.
I just want to, one point of discussion, I just want to make sure that everybody knows that we are approving an off-sale, a new off-sale liquor license, not anything else. Correct? Okay.
I think the other ones have been, haven't the other ones been through, the renewals?
Yeah.
Um, no, we haven't done them yet, but this is actually combination on and off. There would be liquor served with the food and there will be a separate off-sale at the same location.
Yes, most bars are doing that now, having the ability to sell off-sale from their regular stock.
Right, right.
The, what we have just says new off-sale liquor.
That's what the public hearing was for, if you go to the license list.
Oh, so, but, but the public hearing was just for the off-sale. Gotcha, okay.
Yes, yes.
And is the motion just for the off-sale or are we then addressing the on-sale later in the license?
That's through the other list.
Okay.
Right. We closed, I believe the public hearing is closed, correct?
Yes, we closed it and then we made a motion to approve the off-sale, so we'll hit the other ones at the...
You want me to do those now or come back?
No, no, it's the way, we got, motion by Barry, second by Richard, approve the off-sale liquor license for Swanee. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Carrie. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I guess we're done.
Thank you very much.
Back to me?
Back to Carrie.
All right.
We closed, I believe the public hearing is closed, correct?
Yes, we closed it and then we made a motion to approve the off sale, so we'll hit the other ones at the.
You want me to do those now or?
No, no, it's the way, we got, motion by Barry, second by Richard to approve the off sale liquor license for Swanys. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Carrie. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I guess we're done.
Thank you very much.
Back to me?
Back to Carrie.
All right. So the next item, Peggy has scheduled our yearly employee recognition event, so that will be coming up on March 22nd at nine and it'll be very similar to what we did last, last year with a breakfast that is catered. We are estimating, planning for about 50 people and that includes, you know, supervisors, commissioners, et cetera.
On March 22nd on a Friday?
It is on a Friday.
Okay.
Yes.
It'll be up in the third floor?
I, I think it's to be determined, I think she was still trying to.
I've got that far, yes.
Yeah, she's got the cater and the dates and such.
Can you send us an invite?
Item three, Carrie. Have you touched on that or just?
Yes, I crossed it out on my list, but yes, I will go back to it, thank you, I skipped right on over it. So in your packet, it was brought to my attention when I did update the out of state travel policy of notification, that was specific to elected officials, but we expanded to all employees. And then we redid the reimbursement for meals. Really the intent of that policy really was to streamline out of state as well as in-state meal reimbursement, but it was brought to my attention that there's still a specific out, sitting out there, a reimbursement form for out of state, which actually those reimbursements were lower than this updated policy. So what I'm asking are probably just from the board, just to make sure that we're, everybody understands and is on the same page and perhaps through motion that we will follow this policy for out of state and in-state reimbursement.
What, what has changed on it, anything?
Nothing has changed, just for clarification.
So you just want to follow the, the meal rates for, how do we determine if it's metro or regular on out of state?
We don't, we, well, and when I brought this policy forward, we, we didn't define prior with, oh, that is on there, look at that, okay. Really what I'm asking for, and I can, I didn't update this for you, but I certainly can do that, really what we, that's an old policy that's out there that, again, it should really be replaced, if you will.
There is a new one we adopted.
Yeah, there's, they're both of them sitting out there and I think that's where the confusion came in.
The, the new one for is, doesn't it match up with the metro?
No.
What's it, what does the new one match up with?
The new meals?
Yeah.
It doesn't, the out state does not match.
No, but the new one that we did for in-state does not match.
I, I believe that it did match with the higher rate of.
I thought so too, yeah.
Yeah.
So maybe that's the motion we're looking for?
Yeah, that's really.
That one's out of date.
That one, yeah.
Yeah, it's out of date, but it was still sitting out there, I think that was confusing.
Yeah.
It's higher for metro.
Oh, she set it up there, right there.
There it is.
There it is, yeah, that's the one.
Yeah, there were several out there, so I just wanted to bring that to people's attention.
For, for last year.
Because I think it was confusing for state.
Should we, should we make a motion to approve that for out state also?
Yes, and then we'll just remove the other is what I was.
So, so really we're just going to update the meal reimbursement for out of state to match our in-state?
In-state.
I'll, I'll make a motion to do that.
Motion by Dave, second.
I'll second.
Second by Erica to update the out of state per diem the same as our in-state?
Yes. And it will replace our, our former out of state reimbursement policy.
More discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Carrie.
All right, so the next item I have that's in your packet is the resolution 03241C with the opposition to the transfer of state on forfeit lands. I would assume there will be discussion about direction from the board. As you all have been notified, there is a hearing coming up in committee on Thursday. But if the board so wishes to have testimony, additional information, I know there's been at least one of you that has suggested some modifications to the current resolution that is written.
Well, I just, you know, I just was looking at the current resolution and Steve here, I would even maybe like to add to it if we, if it's able, but maybe it's, I think Carrie suggested maybe present it as is and then add the other things, but I just don't know, I just don't know where to start with this. This is so overwhelming for such a short timeframe that's, that's been put upon us, but I came up with a list of things now, now this, the, the bill is changing, I think, as we speak. They are also wanting first right of refusal on, on, on private property. And that's what I'm, that's how it's worded, I, I just don't know how you can do that.
Yeah.
And the DNR has not been brought in, there are so many red flags on this, it's just mind boggling, but just some of the things, if we lose tax forfeit land, we lost revenue to the schools, the townships and the counties, just through, through pilt and through timber sales, hunting, camping, hiking, picnicking, snowmobiling, ATV, UTV, horseback riding, bird watching, we have a huge bird watching event in Detroit Lakes, boating, access to boat ramps, kayaking, swimming, canoeing, hunting, camping leases will be lost, loss of tourism, access to homes and cabins and trails, trapping and RVing, it, the list is just, it's, it's huge. And this is at a time when the state is, is moving forward with a, a new Minnesota office that aims to catch up with states that are marking outdoor recreation as, as an economic boost for creating jobs and drawing visitors. And, and we're going to eliminate this type of acreage from, from public access. Now I know the tribe says that they are going, willing to keep this open in this bill, but we have no control. Once they get that control, they don't have to abide by what they said in, in, in a letter and if the tribal council changes, then they can change it on a whim. This will impact so many people in our, well, in, in this first step is White Earth, White Earth Forest, but it is just so alarming and, and so heartbreaking. It's really, it's heartbreaking to see this type of legislation run through there so fast and have a hearing on Thursday. I just, I really have trouble with this and it really makes me upset about our, our legal process. The article goes on about, about the outdoors and what, what we as Minnesotans want. I, I just, I, you should read the article, what, what this, how important tourism and, and the, to the economy that this is, and we're looking at just throwing this away instead of getting more land. And then I also want to read something that was sent to me. I want to draw your attention to the White Earth Land Settlement Act of 1985. In order to settle native land claims, Congress provided compensation. The band was paid 6.6 million dollars, the state transferred 10,000 acres to the band, the heirs of those land was unjustly taken or paid a fair market value of the land at the time of the taking, together with an interest rate of 5% per annum to the date of payment. In this way, the tax public has already purchased this land. If additional reparations are advisable for those that think that, there are methods available then, other than land transfer. And you can go on what, what the tribal government gets from our government, from the state and the federal governments. You can talk healthcare, you can talk education, you can, you can talk, the sheriff's or their tribal police, I mean, all these things are funded by the state and federal government. I just can't understand how anyone could possibly think this would be a good idea. So that's all I have to say.
I think for me, I've gotten phone calls and emails, not just from people in Becker County, but from around the state with concerns, because this really does affect everybody in the state, because the, we could potentially lose a lot of outdoor recreation. I mean, it affects Becker County fiscally, because we, you know, we're, we're losing funding, but really this affects the whole, everybody in the state, because they, they could potentially be losing access to state land, which is everybody's land.
I think everybody needs to call Rob Kupick.
Yep.
Have a talk with him, that's what they need to do. Our citizens need to call him, because he's the one that, he's the one that's going to give it to them if anybody does.
Well, and I did inform some of you that I did meet up with Rub, excuse me, not Rub, Rob Kupick on Saturday, and really he was just looking for us to collect some data for him and quite frankly, he wasn't real well versed on, on the impacts of this.
Well, this whole thing, like Mr. Nelson said, it's, it's moved so fast from no hearing date Saturday.
That was on this weekend, yes.
And here we got a notice yesterday.
That there's a hearing on Thursday.
We got a hearing on Thursday. Some, you know, they're really pushing it through fast down there. I've had a lot of conversations and contact from business people right here in Detroit Lakes who are very, very, excuse me, concerned about losing that property up there and what you can do, not only to businesses in Detroit Lakes, but even like restaurants, icecrack and all of us up there. They're going to lose business and it's, it's just a.
I think another point is that the tribe has closed access to roads, their property. They have closed it to non-tribal members and you cannot cross property that, and, and on well-established roads and they've cut off private property in the past. So to think that this won't happen in the future is, is, you're, you're putting your head in the sand if you don't think this is going to, that will happen eventually. I mean, you look at the maps and all the trails, trails in there and, and what, what that will do. Now they've offered amendment to say, well, we'll keep the trails open. What happens if that trail needs to move or what happens when they don't want ATVs or UTVs or, or any, they, they'll say, well, we'll keep the roads open. I mean, it'll be a, it's a, it's a systematic way of getting what they want at the end and that's total control. And, and I have to ask, what is the gain? Native Americans have access to this land currently, they have total access to it for hunting, fishing, gathering, there's no, there's nothing that they're going to get except to close it off to others. That's the only thing that's being sought after here. And I think it's, I think it's, I can't, I can't say how bad I think this is, so. And for me, I mean, I'm not one that uses this land, I mean, I'm not one that uses that land very much. I can't imagine how hard this would be for someone who's, who's had a history of, of having a camp in that area and knowing that the traditions that you've, you've had for generations, that it, it could come to an end.
Oh, there's so many people from here that don't have any place to go and that's where they hunt.
Yeah, that's where they go.
That's where they walk, that's where they bite, it's, it, yeah, and they're, yeah. No, it is really sad and that's why I say again, call Rob Kupick.
And I think the key, which I think we've done a, a little bit is, is we need to be able to prove like the, inform, not prove, but inform the legislature of the fiscal laws, because that was the one thing that Rob Kupick, when I talked to him, he was wondering, you know, because, you know, he's saying, the tribe is now saying that, you know, they're not going to change access to it, but that doesn't, that doesn't take away the fiscal implications for our townships, you know, Forest Township.
Yeah, well, he, he needs to ride along when they blocked the highway south of White Earth and we couldn't get through with our drilling rig because they stood there with rifles, remember this? Yeah, so that's, I mean, and that's what they did, nobody could do anything about it.
Carrie, just on this weekend, submit information yet today?
I, I believe we have until tomorrow, I think it's a 24-hour notice.
Yep.
Yes, so it's still a work in progress and trying to, you know, get all this information if that's the direction of the board or if you would like to, you know, have somebody testify on behalf of this.
Can you testify, John?
I'm out, I'm leaving town tomorrow, so.
Well, I, I know I've, Sheriff Glander, are you, did you have some?
There is a Zoom option too.
Yeah, there's a Zoom option. Can you?
Or Steve?
I know Steve and, Steve is, I think would be available, I mentioned it to him, if he would be and.
No, it'd be, that'd be great, yeah, Sheriff Glander and Steve could.
Well.
I would also be willing, if we wanted to meet on Thursday, and even if the three of us were together on the Zoom, I have no problem talking, I just would have.
It's a lot of information.
Yes, yes.
So, more, better, yeah.
Probably could set up Zoom right in here then.
Mm-hmm. And maybe the three of us kind of come together and we can testify?
I'll make it work.
Okay.
Okay, so I will give notice then that we would like a slot for, via Zoom for testimony and then we'll pull the information together and get it sent prior?
Yeah, that'd be great.
All right. Yeah, I think, I think providing information is good, but having somebody.
I think testimony goes a long way. I mean, if we could have somebody testify.
I also want to point out that, that we haven't, I mean, we've never been reached out to by the, by the tribe prior to this notice, I mean, before we got, Senator Kupick got involved and asked that we have a meeting.
Yes.
We haven't even been able to meet, I mean, this was the day we were going to try to set up a meeting with the tribe for those that wanted to try to find out what they were, what they were looking for. But I don't, you know, they're not offering any, I mean, they're not offering half the income from the casinos profits for exchange of this, there, there's no, there's no incentive, they're not offering us anything to, to say, hey, we would like to, we'd like all this land here, this is what we'll do for you, it's just.
Or, or even just having a conversation prior, would, I mean, I, I don't think it would have changed my mind, but it would have.
At least we would have heard our, vetted our, our deepest concerns and.
And had the ability to ask some questions. And, and you're absolutely right, that just came forth with the liaison from, from White Earth after Senator Kupick said you need to start having some conversations with the three counties. And I have responded to her on behalf of Becker County and indicated we are willing to have those discussions, let me know when. I have not heard a date or time.
Well, along the same thing, when we've tried to continue our meetings with them and they get something set up, they canceled and wouldn't reschedule, so.
But I, I think if legislation moves forward with this, it proves that they don't have to communicate with local governments. I mean, this is, and, and that's what they've done, they just choose not to, because they don't, don't feel they need to. I mean, it's where they want to be already and they haven't had any communications with us, so it's.
No, and maybe that's a high point that should be talked about is the fact that there has, there has not been any conversations and then this continues to move through the process.
I mean, there's, there's so many questions that we don't even know what they are, what the questions are yet. Are they going to allow, would they allow leases to continue for hunting shacks? Would, I mean, there's.
There's people's cabins.
There's so many things that we, that we don't even have the questions to, let alone answers. This isn't something that you just, just act on, on a whim and say, I mean, can, can I as a person go say, I, I want, I want the Smoky Hills, I mean, I think I'd really like the Smoky Hills Forest in my name, can you transfer that? I mean, it'd be laughed at and it, it should be, but.
Well, this group down there has been doing a lot of, why they don't have the sheriff involved with the immigrants. I mean, they go on and on down there.
Well, that's.
Pretend we're not here, that's what I mean, no, that's, that's what we got down there.
We have a resolution?
Yeah, I think we got a.
Do we want to?
Point across and I.
Do we want to start with this or do you want this modif, I mean, we're on a very tight turnaround here, so.
I think, I think we authorize the, the resolution in opposition and, and give the board chair some leeway if he wants to add things that we've discussed here today.
Yeah, because you had quite a list that should be on there.
Oh, there's some things in here that, that should be added to the resolution, I think.
Okay.
But I think we, we authorize you to.
To add those, yeah.
To add additional items onto the resolution, is what you're saying, Carrie? Okay.
Yeah, I mean, that we're discussing, I mean, we're all, I think we're all on the same page, it's not, it's not like we're, I, I think there's a House, there's a House file and a Senate file, but just as, it's just right now in the Senate hearing.
I, I think that's correct.
Yeah. Okay, with that, I'll call for a motion on resolution 1C.
I'll make a motion on resolution 1C.
Motion by Richard, second by Erica.
Do you want to make sure we put in the motion that we allow the board chair to add?
We get one authorized board chair's leeway to add some of our discussion items that we had today to the resolution.
Sound good with the.
To modify as needed, okay.
Carrie, you got all the notes?
Yep, I do, I do.
You're way faster.
Okay. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, unanimous, so.
If anyone does, I think we should do a couple more things, if anyone can make it down there, I think we could encourage, you know, it's Steve or, or, I think in-person testimony is, is very valuable too, so I, I think, and we can, if we want to offer, I think we should acknowledge that if, if someone can make it down there, we would certainly support that, either financially or, you know, at the next meeting, we can talk about that travel expense, either for commissioner or, or non-commissioner or, or for employee. But I, I just, we don't have to act on it, I think we just say, if you, if you go down there, I, I think I would support a commissioner going down there also if, if your schedule changes or if my schedule changes or.
So the preference would be in-person, is what you're saying.
I would think even if we did split, if some could be here and some down, I mean, I think it's that. I think.
I think it's crucial. Yeah.
So I think if Steve, I mean, if Steve and Mitch could go down there in person and then have Erica and Carrie maybe here, that would, I mean, I think that would be better yet. So and if, again, if a commissioner can can get going, I think we would.
It's at 3 o'clock, so.
At 3 o'clock.
Is it 3?
Three or two.
What's at 2? Is that 2?
One, I read 3 on one thing.
I thought it was early, but I don't know. But.
Yeah, we'll make sure we have the right.
And the other thing I want to, I think, and I will be willing to make a motion to this effect, I think we need to have some lobby entity be very specific for this item, for this item and ongoing items. And I think we move forward with with researching that. And I would like, I will, I will, but I would like some discussion. I want to make a motion to authorize the board chair to to get some representation. And I and I have a couple ideas. But I think if if the if the board is willing, do we authorize a board chair to hire a lobbyist for this item as soon as possible and authorize up to a dollar amount? And I would say up to like 10,000 or 15,000. And then I think in future, we're going to have to, we're going to have to adjust our budget because this is this is that big.
It's not going to go away.
It's not going away.
I was going to.
If I may, is that something that you would, the board would like me to reach out to the other affected counties to see if.
Well, I think so, but I think we have to. We don't have the time to do that.
Just to move.
I think we need to.
On the backside.
On the backside. I think we get we'll get together a partnership with them. But I don't know what dollar amount, so I'm going to I'm going to put it a little high and hopefully we can we can get it cheaper than that. And I don't know how long, it'll be short term. But I'd like to make a motion to authorize the finance committee and the board chair to sign an agreement with a lobbyist group to keep us informed and lobby against the transfer of land for with a dollar amount up to $15,000.
Motion by Barry. Have a second.
Yeah, Erica, second. Yeah. She beat me to it.
And I have a name of someone, but I don't want to say it publicly because I don't know if they have a conflict yet, you know, so they can't do it or.
You can provide that to me.
Just pass it on to Carrie.
And otherwise.
Hopefully, we have somebody on the right side of this because I just don't want to pay the wrong guy to go down there and represent us.
No, I you'd be comfortable, I think. And that will be up to the finance committee then.
Okay.
Here, we got a motion and a second. Move on hiring a lobbyist. Further discussion? Hearing on all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Carrie.
So the last item I have on the agenda is, this has been brought through committee, and I'm looking for board direction. There had been some suggestion for me to do some research on executive search for to fill the position of the vacancy of the administrator position. I did get a couple of proposals, one being from the DDA, who we have a current relationship, and they are doing our executive search for the county attorney's office. So whether or not that is what the the board would like to move forward with that, or if they have other suggestions. The cost is 24,000.
I'm I would question if we should post it, like, see what what we get.
Sure.
So before before we spend that money. I'm not opposed to doing it. I would just like to see maybe what.
It's a lot of money.
Yeah, what we could get first. I think I agree with the assistant county attorney because we've had it posted for a long time. We haven't gotten any, you know, qualified applicants. I guess I would like to see first what we can get on our own before we would hire it.
I think in the past, we've done some of that, and we weren't real lucky. I think we this is something that's going to take some time. And to get qualified candidates, I think we've got to reach out nationwide for search. And in this, up to 24, I believe it is, this firm would handle getting it all out there, screening, getting it everything.
Yeah, it's quite a process. And I don't know if this county has done this in the past. I guess I don't know. But with how it works, it's from the very beginning. They do all the advertising, the reach outs, the screening. It's several steps within the screening process, and then they bring whatever their criteria is, whatever applicants get through that screening process to the board for consideration of next steps. So yeah, I'm just looking for what the board would like me to do.
Are you asking, then, you would bring back at a next meeting to the contract or the dollar amounts hard or?
Yeah, they don't do the contract. It's just they send us the bill at the end of the end of it. So there's not a contract involved if we go with the the DDA firm.
I I'm comfortable with DDA.
You could set a top dollar amount.
The top dollar is it is the 24,000.
It could be less.
Yeah, I don't know that it would be less. I think that's a pretty set amount of what you do.
Yeah, yeah. Because we did the other one.
Is there?
Oh, it could be $1,000.
$1,000 less, yeah.
We have two. Yes, sorry. So.
Board wishes to get more information. Bring it, Mark.
I I'm. The reason I like going with the firm is they they go more in-depth. They have resources that that we don't. And they they can dig deeper and ask. Because we have a lot of worries about how what questions you can ask and what and so I'm I'm supportive of going with the entity. I would rather have someone local that we have some knowledge of, but I think you have to reach out. I mean, we've read Jack Ingsed was out of California, and we had interviewers that, you know, we did. But I agree, it's going to be it's going to take a process. And I and I don't think I think Carrie's been doing a great job. I want to thank her for doing that. And so I'm not, as long as Carrie's not in a big hurry, I'm not in a big hurry. So but that's up to that's up to.
Yeah, yeah. So really, your option, yeah, your options are to hold on this, move forward. You know, the turnaround time, I could just speak to what we've done in the attorney's office. You know, you're really, they have a lot of our background information on the county of what we want to highlight already. So then, you know, talking qualifications and, you know, it would be, you know, looking at probably posting if we started the process immediately. We're probably looking in the next couple of weeks as far as a posting.
Do you want to make a motion to move forward?
Well, I I the only other question I have is, have we thought about coordinator versus administrator?
I have been a kind of went back and forth, and I don't think we want to go back to a coordinator.
Yeah, I don't think so. We don't do very well as a group. We better have somebody in charge.
Coordinator to me is is more or less a.
Traffic control.
Yeah, secretary to the board. Has no control over.
No.
I think a good, to be honest with you, I think a good administrator is a good is a coordinator working with the department. I think that's their role. And and maybe there's only a few times when they have to interject in, you know, their authority, hopefully.
I remember back when we did have coordinator for him, and that wasn't working the best. So that's why Mike Williams was the first admin. He was a coordinator and he got changed to administrator. That's back a couple of years. But. Move forward? More information?
I'm I'm fine with whatever the board wants to do. I think DDA is the group we want to be with. And what the time schedule is, is up, it's it's up the finance committee. What how how quickly you want to turn around or?
Well, it's it's good. I'm just estimating. It's going to be six months.
Yeah.
At least. I'd I'd make a motion, move forward with the DDA, I think, search for administrator.
I'll second.
Up to 24,000.
24,000.
Got a motion and a second? Any other discussion?
Just to point out that if there is, you know, if anyone has any names that they think of, it's there, these search companies ask for those. They'll ask for those. And they want they want all they want input from any anyone that they any commit, any commissioner can give them input who they think would be a qualified applicant. So.
I mean, I would I would really like to see somebody committed to Becker County.
Yes.
You know, somebody that, you know, live, whether they live here currently or, you know, some somebody that really wants what's the best for our county. So.
I would also, I would also agree with that. And I would also like to have somebody that has, obviously, you know, in public, public, you know, being a public person is a good experience. But, you know, I don't think we should limit it just to someone that's been in the public sector. I think we should also look at people that have been running businesses, that have worked with people, that are good at organizing and running those big operations, maybe businesses in our community that would be interested. I somebody that's invested in our community and somebody that knows how to run a successful business, I think is something we have to look for, too.
And I think that would be under requirements because there are times, and I've seen it here in the past, that when we've tried it ourselves, we've pigeonholed ourself under requirements and experience and specific specific things that we pigeonholed ourselves to get a, I don't I don't know how to say this, but we ended up with with elderly, you know, the user experience required it. We ended up with older people and basically limited yourself to what group of people you had. And it was very, it was very tight. So I think a professional will keep that broad and then whittle it down.
Yeah, they'll search private sector and all over, so.
But I think we have input saying that, that we want to keep this search broad.
Right. And to your point, Commissioner, if we were to go with this firm, you know, the process is reaching out and collecting data from from the board about what qualities and qualifications, et cetera, that you would want to see in this position.
Okay, we got a motion and a second.
I do.
Further discussion?
I do. I just wanted to point out, too, I do know that AMC does speak of them highly when it comes to it's the DDA highly when it comes to recruitment. So.
Yep.
With that, I'll call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie.
Thank you. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. Mary, let's see. Finance here quick.
Okay, the first item I have is the combination on off sale with Sunday sales for Swanies.
Motion approved.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Carrie.
Combination on off sale with Sunday renewal for Icecrack and Lodge.
Motion approved. Second.
Motion by Barry, second by Dave. Further discussion? Hearing on all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Here.
On sale with Sunday renewal for Forest Hills Golf and Resort.
Motion approved. Second.
Motion by Barry, second by Dave. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Here.
32 on off sale renewal for the Hideaway Resort.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Barry, second by Dave. Further discussion? Hearing on all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Here.
On sale renewal for Conrad Bottle Shop, Ron Anderson.
Motion to approve. I'll second.
Motion by Barry, second by Dave. Discussion? Hearing on all in favor, say aye.
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 Here.
Thank you.
Thanks, Barry.
Thanks, Barry.
Brian.
Go right out here. Soil and water.
Morning, Carl.
Good morning. Good morning, Commissioners. Really have. First item is our delegation agreement with Minnesota DNR. We enter this every year. This may be our 10-year anniversary this year of entering this agreement. This allows soil and water to hire watercraft inspectors. They're authorized to work at public access sites as long as we work with the DNR on training and follow their their guidelines. So I guess I'll be asking for a signature on this here today. I have a hard copy here if one was not printed. Also, yesterday, at the finance committee, we discussed raising the pay rate for the watercraft inspectors. You know, we're competing with Otter Tail and Hubbard County, who both hire large groups of watercraft inspectors. I looked at all the postings statewide and, you know, bumping that up to a $16 minimum gets us in line with a lot of other counties. Now, last year was the first year that I was more than 300 or 400 hours short on the total number of hours we want to work throughout the season. So I'd like to close that gap a little bit and get closer to our target of 25 to 30 seasonal employees. That's a an ambitious goal, and it's raising the pay a bit will will help us get there. To cover that, we would reduce the total number of hours worked around 700 hours. But that still allows for, you know, 11,000 plus hours of inspection at the access sites. It's a, I think, a robust effort. That group is part of over 700 people that local units of government are hiring to do this type of work now. So again, there's competition out there. I'd like to bump up that that pay rate.
Here, we got a motion in front of us?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 1A.
Second.
Dave, have a second. Barry?
Hi, Carl. I think I I don't know if I told you or Brian, but the inspector out of Big Corman has been has such high regard from the people around there. I mean, she's so she's so good to work with. And when, you know, it's really people come, like, they say, she'll go and pick up garbage. She keeps, I mean, she goes above and beyond her job duties. And and just again, a great thanks to those that are going above and beyond what their job description is and being so pleasant to the individuals out there. I've had a few encounters with her when I put my boat in and out in my jet ski. So.
That's that's good to hear. I think raising the pay will allow us to hopefully hang on to those folks that are good with this position and are doing that type of work. So we'll do our best to expand on that and find a few more like her.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Hearing on all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie.
Thanks very much.
We need a motion for the agreement?
Yeah.
We need a motion for approve the agreement with the DNR?
Yes.
The delegation agreement?
I'll make a motion.
We need a motion for that?
Probably.
I believe.
I think so.
Yeah, it's a.
An annual.
It's an annual legal agreement.
I'll move on that and make a motion to approve the delegation agreement with the DNR.
Motion by Dave, have a second.
I'll second.
By Erica. Further discussion? Hearing on all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Carrie, thanks.
Very good. Thank you.
Thanks, Carl.
IT. Didn't see her back there.
Hiding behind the wall.
She always hides behind the wall.
Good morning, Commissioners. I have two things to bring before you. One is to purchase an additional two firewalls to be used so we can have so we can secure our network a little bit more by placing our Wi-Fi in the secured part of the network. That the cost for that is $5,629.95 with an ongoing licensing cost of about $500 for the foreseeable future. What this allows us to do is it allows us to take our Wi-Fi, and we can then all of a sudden have a public Wi-Fi, which we've had some requests. Certainly, the law library has requested that. And we have, we also have the need to have the attorney's office, which currently they could not be on Wi-Fi due to BCA requirements, and the sheriff's office not be on Wi-Fi. So this solves that issue. Any questions?
Any questions on IT, everyone?
No.
No, we all understand IT perfectly.
Okay.
I know what IT stands for.
Well, then just I ask you to say yes, okay?
Excuse me, include both purchases in this motion there.
Okay. The next the next thing is to do what's is to purchase what's called a SIM tool. What a SIM tool is, it's a security event information management tool. We get lots of data every day from all of our systems, from switches to everything. We get so much data that it's hard for us to call through to identify what's important and what isn't. This tool allows us to do that. And again, it's another BCA requirement. And it's the first year, including $9,000 worth of consulting, so we can get it up and running quickly. It's $26,813.58. And if we want to, we could add the next two years, and which we would pay in '25 and '26, and the ongoing expense is $17,813.58.
I just have one question.
Sure.
Did you find out if we have to pay all of that upfront?
We do not. We get to pay for if we wanted if we wanted to go extend for three years and lock in the pricing, and I know it's going to go up to $19,000 year two, we would then we would then be locked in for three years, and we get to pay that. We could pay it all at once, but we do not have to. We could pay 24, 25, and 26. And if that turns out not to be true, I would bring it back to the board. So I'm asking for approval for both those amounts.
I'll make a motion to approve the SIM tool consulting and the license for 26,813.58 and the next generation firewall for 56,2995.
And do extend it out to the three-year?
Yes, and and for the SIM card SIM license to lock in the the three-year pricing.
I'll second that.
Motion by Barry, second by Dave. Further discussion? Hearing on all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie.
Thanks very much.
Carrie.
Thanks very much.
Thanks, Jody.
Anybody need a five-minute break?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, let's, let's take a quick five-minute break.
We talked too much.
No, he didn't call me back.
Morning, Sheriff Guyler. Good morning. Mr. Chair, Members of the Board, I have two items this morning. The first one being squad car purchased. This will be for three squads. Three Fords, two of which were in the, of the, two of the five that we budget for each year, and one is a replacement squad due to a crash. Total is 61, no, excuse me, it's the.
They're all within budget.
They're all within budget, yeah. $93,945 plus the 46,972.
Some of these are kind of catch-up from back in, what, '21?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two, and we ordered, you couldn't get them?
September of '22, we ordered five, we did not.
Then that budget money got moved into general, and that's why I think it's critical sometime this, before budgeting starts, we get that capital approval plan and budget.
Yeah.
Because that money would go in there and.
Stay there.
So.
Yeah, so that's why we need to have five-year capital.
I have a motion to approve the purchases?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Dave, second?
I'll second.
Mary Erica, further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Carrie, thanks.
Thank you. Item two, Resolution 0324-1D. It's the new Lakes Area Special Weapons and Tactics Team Mutual Aid Agreement. This has been vetted through MCIT along with our county attorney, so we will remove the one that was approved last, and this will be the new one now that we're asking for approval.
Motion on 1D?
I'll make a motion to approve 1D.
Motion by Dave, second?
I'll second.
Mary Erica, discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Do you want these copies back?
I do need those copies back, correct. Thank you.
Just some wordsmithing on it, Joe.
Don't give your stuff to anybody else.
Should be a couple. Anything else, Todd?
No, thank you for everything.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
Brian, it looks like you're up.
Yes, yes.
Sorry to have made you wait, Brian.
No, you're good.
No one wants to sit next to you.
Anyone want to come up and sit in front, Jody?
Sure, I would love to.
We allow Fergus Falls people to sit in those chairs.
Yeah. We're not too far behind schedule, Brian. You're all good? You can catch us up further.
Good morning, Commissioners, Carrie and Peggy. We are in front of you today to present our 2024 Corrections Comprehensive Plan to Becker County. Of importance is this plan is specific to Becker County. Even though we supervise Menomon and Otter Tail County, this plan is only for Becker. So the information and language that you see in your plan is specific to us here. One of the things that I'd like to start with is the resolution, this is the first time that we've done this format like this, and this change has come about from the Council of State Governments, where each county is responsible for providing a Corrections Comprehensive Plan to the Board and approved by the Board. Being that this is the first one, I would just like to highlight on the resolution in itself from statute language, comply with commissioner developed standards and reporting requirements, provide a budget for planned correctional services and programming, sufficiently address community needs and supervision standards, non-CCA jurisdictions must track and report on the use of correctional fees, which here in Becker, we do not have any. Comprehensive plan is valid for four years, and every two years, I will come back to the Board here and give an updated plan as to how our goals are going over these four years. And then all approved comprehensive plans, including updated plans, must be made publicly available on the Department of Corrections website, which will happen in the near future here. And again, this is specific to Becker County. So Peggy, if I could have you start with page four on our comp plan, I'd like to start with introductions of our staff. So towards the bottom, Becker County Adult Felony Office, we have five and a half probation officers, we have two office support staff, and within our county contract office, which is also our DOC office, which manages the misdemeanor, gross misdemeanor and juvenile clients, we have three probation officers and one county's, or, excuse me, and one support staff. Interestingly enough, on the bottom part there, we have Jody Kulik, who supervises our specialty courts in Becker County at no additional cost to the county. So we provide that, that supervision detail at no cost to the county. So at this time, I'd like to turn over introductions to my staff. They're going to let you know who they are, what caseload that they supervise, and if you have any questions for them before we get back into the main body, feel free to ask.
Which one is the half of one?
What's that? Yeah, that would, that would be Larry, he's split between there and Menomon.
I'm Todd Erickson. I have a mixed caseload, felony level offenses. I cover the areas of Becker County, eastern part of Becker County, which is Lake Park, Goddard, and Comonade area, and also the western half of Becker County, Crazy, Pine Point, Pondsford, Old Sage, and also in that area. A mixed caseload is basically supervision levels of anywhere from every other week, and it kind of trickles down to, I think, you have six months of supervision.
Okay.
I'm Larry Boongard, I work, I'm the half, and I work all on the reservation. I have a special aid caseload, I'm actually part of a, it's called ATPO, Assistant Tribal Appeal Pilot Program, wherein the tribe has hired two assistant tribal appeals that work with me, and the plan is to get them in connection with a lot more resources, because the tribe doesn't have a lot of resources, although what they were finding is there's resources that people couldn't access. So that's one of the things that those two guys do, is they become very familiar with what's available in the country. But it also allows us to have some enhanced supervision, and our caseload is all enhanced registered people on reservation. So I have that, that tier from Callaway over to Pine Point. I do a lot of the stuff north of that, that Menomon does. But it's working well, and I think I have, right now, most of our caseload, it turns out that the risk need assessment tool is the body that those guys are coming out and are really helping program. It's been around, I think it's coming up on the second year now, I think in June, it'll be two years, so it's kind of a new program. I think the last I heard, it's in Beach Lake.
The nice part about Larry's, the program that Larry supervises is it keeps our Native American folks grounded within their cultural and spiritual beliefs. Our assistant tribal POs have a good, close connection with the tribe themselves, and so they're able to have that continuous family surrounding that the two assistants provide our, our supervision model with Larry.
One of the things that we have on that works, seems to work really well and helps, is we're reaching out to the prison before the guy, people are coming out of these institutions, actually making that connection with them so that they know who the heck they have to talk to, and then, and then getting them connected with services before they, and that does seem, and it's one of the things that we're, you know, I want to write about basically, so.
My name's Jennifer Johnsard, and I cover a traditional or a medium caseload. I cover anything with a Detroit Lakes address, so I do the city of Detroit Lakes, and my cases range from once a month to once every six months.
I'm Jody Kulik. As Brian said, I have specialty courts, I have drug court, veteran's court, and DUI court, majority of my caseloads. And on behalf of the drug court team, I want to invite you to our next graduation, next Thursday at 2:30. I think it's our 155th graduate for the Clay Becker drug court.
Do you, do you guys get those notifications? Okay, they're coming through?
Yeah, Crystal usually sends them.
Perfect.
Used to get them from Dawn, now I'm getting my age here, but.
Yeah, yeah.
You started, Jody, is that this Thursday, or is it two days from now?
No, next Thursday, 2:30.
I'm Charity Reese. I cover enhanced clients in Detroit Lakes, so people that need to be seen both twice a month, and I also cover whalers or anything.
My name is Steve Billhar. I cover the predatory offender, or better known as individuals who are sexually offended caseload, I cover that for all Becker and Menomon County.
I'm Nick Campbell. I cover all gross misdemeanor case loads for all Becker County.
Karen Rundle, I cover all the juvenile cases in Becker County.
Perfect. Thank you. If I could have you go to page six of the plan. On this section, this is noted as our strategic planning at the local level. We have four bullets on here as to, one, the first one is to collaborate with, continue collaboration with the Becker County Jail in utilizing the new release planner position that was established this past year, keep that going strong. Continued engagement with full staff allotment within the Becker County Drug and DUI Courts, so continuing with Jody and her involvement. Continued work on reducing juvenile placement costs and monitoring costs throughout the calendar year of 2024. The assistance from Erin and her caseload noting about a 45% reduction from year 2022. And addressing pretrial supervision services and seeking support from Becker County, our judicial body and key stakeholders. One of the things that we may be adding throughout our three districts, our three counties is a pretrial release agent. So that'll be coming in 2024, hopefully. Peggy, if I could have you go to page 12. So in our plan, we identify what, what components that we are using to actually change behavior of our clients. So if you notice on the, on the bullet point towards the bottom, we utilize individual cognitive restructuring and learning techniques, from the use of carry guides, cog worksheets, decision points, bunch of stuff to bore you. One of the biggest parts that we have coming up here is our Family Peace Initiative, our specific curriculum, working with our domestic violence folks. Previously, it's been, it's been difficult for our clientele to access domestic violence programming. So what we have done within our district is we have trained our staff to provide that curriculum. Previously, it's an at-cost for each client. We are coming out with this curriculum, and Nick is going to explain this to you, where our clients do not have to pay any service fees, so there won't be any barriers or excuses for not being able to attend, in addition to they're able to attend remotely too, so that's going to take out quite a few barriers. So that's going to take out quite a few barriers. So Nick, if you want to just give a little heads up on what that is.
So, as charity and I recently got trained on the domestic violence program, or behavior, or BIP program, I should say. And our goal is to provide this program for all domestic violence offenses, since it is statistically required, for them to complete, but it is not available longingly. And we're free at cost to them, and it will also be, they'll have the ability to do virtually flexible, like we're looking at possibly working on if they don't have the technology access as well. But we're going to be working for flexible anywhere, so they don't have any reason not to be available to our program.
And just so the Board knows, BIP is Better's Intervention Programming. So it's something that we haven't had access to for some time. Jim Schneider has left that position or opportunity for us to continue working with him, so we have to come up with our own solution to do that in-house. The next piece on page 13, Peggy. During 2024, we are going to look to implement fully our decision points, cognitive restructuring programming. Basically, what this is, is if I can change your thinking, I can change your behavior, which changes your actions, right? And hopefully reduces recidivism over time. Our other components will continue to exist, our carry guides, which is another cog-based tool, and our case planning process is going to be increased. Larry's already spoken about our white earth involvement with his specific caseload. And Peggy, if I could have you go to page 15, which now will bring you into the budget and per statute, you'll notice that that is one of the components on there. Towards the bottom, Peggy, if you see, our budget is fully funded for all of Becker County. Important to note, for a non-CCA county, is for all corrections-related services, community supervision services, Becker County only pays for the funding of half of the three contract positions, which would be Jody, Erin, and Nick, and then one full-time support staff. So all other felony services and half of our contract is all paid for by the state. Okay, so that's our budget in a nutshell. Really, the only involvement from the county side is that small portion of our contract office. So we have that, we're fortunate to have that model here in Becker County. Page 16, Peggy. Some of our highlights over this next year and over this past couple of years, our tribal relations continues to increase in our working capacities with them. During this past year, all of our staff that work with the tribe has gone through our American Indian relations training with the tribe themselves. That's a statewide initiative that the Commissioner's Office has required any of our staff that works with our Native American population to attend, so our staff have done that. Number two, we actually spoke about this in our last meeting when Erin and I were here, but I think Wade's going to draw your attention to our client surveys component down there on page 16, and then, yeah, if you want to take that.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Wade Erickson. This is the first time I've been before your Board. I'm the newly appointed Corrections Program Director for Detroit Lakes District. I've been an agent for many, many years before that, so I'm just starting in a new position, which is an assistant under Brian. So I anticipate you'll be seeing me more frequently in some of the meetings here, and I look forward to meeting you more. Brian talked about the surveys, and if you look on page 16 under number two, we're talking about the WAZR, that's what we affectionately call it, but the acronym for it is Working Alliance Inventory Short Revised. So what does that mean? Well, in a nutshell, to condense things, is that we wanted to get a client-centered, client-based survey out to the folks that we work with and get an idea from all these evidence-based practices and all these new initiatives we're doing to see what their response is to our approach and the work that we're doing. Obviously, at first, thinking that we're sending these surveys out and leaving ourselves wide open to our clients and the people we work with, geez, what type of feedback are we going to give back? Because obviously, we work with people in some pretty difficult situations. But overwhelmingly, we received a terrific response on these, specifically up here in Becker County, we received 130 surveys back, and most of those were, are very complimentary and gave evidence and talked about the fact of how the working relationships these agents are doing with their folks is making a big difference. You ask, how do we get those surveys to the people? With our IT services, we're able to do something called broadcast messaging in our CSTS web platform. So we're able to send out these surveys and text messages and email, which is a great thing, because we can do that with ease, and we can resend it if an offender doesn't, has an interruption in their service. And we got a lot of good feedback on that and being accessible to them to be doing that. We also sent out surveys, you know, in just hard copy, regular mail form, for people that didn't have those technology advantages. Some of the things that we heard, and I guess being part of this pilot study of this WAZR in the state of Minnesota, is that we were fortunate enough to receive some recognition from the Commissioner's Office and from the Employee Recognition Committee, where they acknowledged our work and our project in being kind of a pioneer in starting the survey throughout the other districts in the state. One of the comments that you'll notice, I'll just read one under B, as it states, "My agent made me feel like I had a chance to be different and just made my supervision comfortable by being consistent and guiding me throughout the process of rehabilitation into the community and gave me respect and trust," and only to do the same in return. So just wanted to speak about the survey and let you folks know that our agents are doing some hard work, and they're really committing to trying to change people's lives and keep the community safe.
The other highlight on the next one is on 17, titled aptly, Consistency and Stability. Over this last year, we've had absolute minimal staff turnover. You know, when we do have staff turnover in corrections, especially on the probation agent end, when a client has to switch from a new, from their agent who they've had for a couple of years or however long, it interrupts the flow of how they are doing with their case planning and their change process. You know, it creates loss of continued, loss of continuity, disruption in the case management process. It can delay services, increase workload for our staff, loss of specialized knowledge and skills, and it's a negative perception within the criminal justice system that staff aren't wanting to work in this field. We're very fortunate enough in Becker County that we have not experienced a high turnover, especially over the last two years. The other highlight coming in on the next page, Peggy, is the addition of Wade's position as an assistant district supervisor. His position is going to be greatly detailed with our evidence-based practices areas, including the launch of decision points, and also working alongside of our domestic violence programming group that we have here. I'm excited for Wade to start tracking some of the intimate details of what comes along with client participation, client engagement, agent abilities to work with their clients in a different, in a different setting as well. And then number five is our providing structured normative feedback, which is kind of a component that we've missed over the years. And basically, when you go to the doctor, you receive a survey, and you receive your results telling you, you know, what your, what your issues could be, how we can change things, et cetera. That is what we've worked strongly on over the last couple of years. And then Peggy, on number 27, is some data. So some data that you might be asking is, well, how do we show that our efforts are actually working? And Barry, this might answer a little bit, little bit more than the other day when we were in the Sheriff's Committee, because I actually sought some more information on our percentages here, where this is kind of misleading if you were to just look at the actual lines themselves. So what you notice here on the bottom is a total amount of clients at 296 clients during this period when this was run. So you have a total of 296 folks. You have, in our felony area, 38 cases that were unsuccessful. What we look for on a typical, on a typical data point is about a 30% unsuccessful case rate, or unsuccessful on probation, et cetera. Right now, out of all of those 296 cases, we have 38 in the felony criteria. We are at 12.8% compared to a norm of about 30 across the state and other counties. Okay? So 38 is that 12% of 296. We had four that were unsuccessful, which is 1.35%. So four out of the 296, and out of the 79 total, it's a minimum unsuccessful rate for our staff working with our clients. So I'm very proud to show that overall, we have a 15 point, we're sitting at a 15.2% unsuccessful rate for all cases, and almost an 85% success rate on those cases. Those are really good numbers, folks. It's some, it's some very, very good work that we're doing for the folks in Becker County, and I truly believe that it's, it's the relationship that our agents have with our clients, it's the skills that they bring with them in regards to what they're doing to change those behaviors. And also, we have on the last page, our juvenile numbers, and Erin can speak to that over the whole amount of numbers that we have there, which is also a very positive for Becker County. So Erin, if you want to take that part.
Yes, so again, kind of highlighting the same numbers that Brian had gone over with the adult caseload. The total, grand total was 81 clients and a successful case rate of 81 total, so 100% success rate for 2022, I believe this was ran. I contribute that to the community. It's not one person or one agency, it's all of us working together, providing resources, and then it's the clients. The clients are doing the work. They get the education courses, they get the community service, they do the cog programming, they're making the changes. We're just providing the support, the stability, maybe the connections to other agencies. Like I said, I work with child protection, children's mental health, and we all work really well together. If we didn't work well together, I think we would see more unsuccessful cases, more clients falling through the cracks. But it's been a great team approach. You're always going to have one or two that typically fall through the cracks, maybe more, but we're doing best efforts to catch all of those. And I just, everyone's doing a great job, and the families too, including the families in it, getting their input, helping to provide them gas vouchers, something that, you know, we might not think of that's a big deal, but to some of those families really makes the difference. I had a client in West Central Region, West Central Regional Juvenile Center recently with a 30-day eval, and the parent told me, had those gas vouchers not been provided, they wouldn't have been able to go. They wouldn't have been able to attend every meeting. Those 30-day evals are very intensive, and it's a meeting every week in person. So that family was very appreciative and thankful for just that simple assistance that we can provide. So eliminating a lot of those barriers that weren't typically thought of before, I feel has really helped contribute to the numbers you see on the screen there.
So that kind of brings us to a closing. Our staff don't get to come into the Board that often to introduce themselves and tell you about the good work that they do. So I felt it important to bring them along with our comprehensive plan. We'll look to have them come in when we have an updated plan and any, when any of our goals change, et cetera. So for today, we're looking for an approved resolution by the Board Chair and the Board for our plan submission, as you have in front of you. And before that, if you have any questions of myself, Wade, or our staff, by all means.
I don't know if many of you know this, but my wife was in probation. She worked with Jody, and I think, I think it's changed since then, because she got out of it because it got to be too much paperwork. She wanted more contact. And I think she just said, I, I need to have more contact with people rather than it just getting drawn. I think Brian said that, and that it's become more people, you know, the, how you succeed is have the contact with the people. So kind of, kind of have my, I have, I know the environment, and I, and I just appreciate what you do and the difficulties that you guys face. One of the questions I had is, you know, there's that case up at Fargo with that subway worker, that subway supervisor. How do you, do you guys have any involvement on placement? He was a sex offender, and he, now Subway's being sued because he was supervising minors, and there was, he was charged then with, with, I don't know what the charge was, but with the minors, and he was a high-risk sex offender. Do you, do you monitor who they, who they can oversee also?
Absolutely, yeah. And I, unfortunately, I can't speak directly to that case, but if we ever had a client, and Wade can speak to this, especially in regards to his experience with sex offender clientele, if we ever had a client that was, had any type of supervision or basically supervisory tasks with minors, that wouldn't have happened with here. It's something that we would have never have approved.
That's good to hear, because that, that's just, you look at, you read that in the papers, and of course, you don't know all the facts of it, but you just say, how did, how did that happen? How did, how did he get, you know, in, I mean, in that controlling or supervisor position for a minor, and probably a vulnerable minor at that too? So nice to know that we're, hopefully, that's, that's a mistake that should never, I mean, should never happen.
Correct, you're absolutely correct. It would not happen over, over here.
Thanks, we have a motion.
Yeah, I just want to make one more comment on the juvenile caseload, 100% success. Do you think that has any, any, do you think there's any rationale that those people just really don't want to see their officer again, that they just?
I think that's a very leading question, Barry. I would say it attributes 100% to that.
They want to just, I do not want to see that woman again in my office. No offense, Erin. I'll make a motion to approve, I want to.
Is your wife interested in coming back into probation now that we've made all these changes?
I probably kind of doubt it.
Got a motion in a second, for the discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I just wanted to thank all you guys for what you do. It's awesome. You guys are doing a job I could never do.
Thank you, Jamie. You know John's in a rush?
No, it's great to see, you know, we hear names, but now we can put faces. I know a couple of bad situation with Larry there over there.
I've heard.
But no, it's good to see everybody, and thank you too for all the work you do out there behind the scenes, Mark.
Well, Larry must have a real strong work ethic. You must work with Johanna once in a while, so, oh my gosh. Bless you, bless you, bless you.
Thank you all for your time. We really do appreciate it.
Thank you, guys.
Stay with the updates.
Thank you, Wade.
You guys will on Thursday?
Yeah. Hey, I was at my first drug court graduation when, was it two weeks ago?
Nice.
Last week, yeah. Yep. And I knew who was graduating too, that was even better.
Thank you.
Kevin.
Pardon?
Good morning, Commissioners, Kerry, Peggy.
Morning.
I'll make mine short here. So, Resolution 0324-1G, I am requesting approval for the new transit procurement policy. This is a template that came from the state, so they're just trying to get all the agencies in line with what the regulatory requirements are from the FTA.
Resolution 1G, a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve, Resolution 1G.
I'll second that, motion.
Mr. Chair, I had a question on the federal cost principles in page 30. No, I'm just kidding.
Got a motion, a second. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Great, thanks.
My second resolution, 0324-1F, requesting to hire two part-time drivers. I have one part-time driver that wants to go to a various position where he is just going to be available for on-call, absentees, and so on, so forth. And then with that ridership increases, I really need, we're running pretty much six buses every day now, and with our current staff, we just can't continue to fill those shifts, so. Point 1.5 of that, point 6 FT, we'll have to come out of reserves, the rest is all in the budget, so not very much money. We do have the reserve amount.
Have a motion on Resolution 1F?
I'll make a motion. Go ahead, I'll second it.
Motion by Richard, second by Dave. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Just a question, what is the starting salary for a driver? What is the wage?
Well, we, we like to get them at level three, which means that at level three, when we hire them, they have their CDL with their passenger endorsement, which, you know, you're looking you're looking at, I think that's twenty nineteen, twenty, something like twenty forty-six. I don't remember the exact sense, but, you know, the trouble is right now is when we, we don't get many applications. We went to the last round of even the full-time employment. We got one application. So, you know, the inquiries I get personally by phone are for people that don't have either their CDL, Class C or B, or don't have a passenger endorsement. So then when they ask, you know, what, you know, how would I start out? Well, obviously, it's a level one, the lowest rate, and, but we'll pay for your training. You know, we'll pay for you to get your CDL. We'll pay for you to get your passenger endorsement. Then with the idea, then, you'd move to a level three, once you've, you've completed that. So, you know, and I, I know we're in a comprehensive work study, but, you know, if you, even the bus drivers out there, the reason we lost our last part-time bus driver is because she was making twenty-two, and there you go, don't quote me on the cents.
I think Lake Park's twenty-seven with benefits.
Yeah, yeah, and she, she, her wage, she, she actually was just below twenty-seven. She got full-time, and, you know, it's just something we couldn't compete with, so.
Starting on level one, though, is what, twenty?
No, it's not even that high. It's, I can get you that information. Yeah, I don't remember exactly what it is. No.
That's fine.
Yeah, it's below twenty, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I thought we did up that.
You did up that twice. You guys have actually approved two different increases since I've been on board, which has helped a ton. You know, this last round even, I don't, even, we even got that full-time person to apply. If we hadn't, no, I don't think so, because he was making more money at actually his previous job, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kyle, comp plan update.
Steve.
Why the heck did I do that? I crossed you off, Steve.
It's okay. Well, we did mention his name.
Good morning. I just have the one resolution for considerations to allow us to move forward and apply to get a Green Corps member to work here in the county for two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five. This individual would work on developing our separated organics program. The counties around here have already moved into that position. They've got pilot projects, and I thought, before we moved into it, I'm going to see what kind of mistakes they make before we go into it. With your approval, we'll apply for a Green Corps member to work on.
I'll make a motion to approve one-B.
A motion, a second?
Second.
Second by Barry. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Great.
Good morning. Just to go over that last work session we had with our group, I still got to get you some notes from them. I haven't seen the summary yet, but they did, or they are putting the draft policies and goals and vision online, along with a comment box for the public to start reviewing that in general. With those focus groups, I'll just touch on it quick for you, Barry. Our first one with, with the Board, we essentially just looked at zoning districts within the county, that being residential, ag, commercial, industrial, along with in a mixed-use layer. The way that mixed-use layer was kind of explained to us is, for instance, if you have a, a commercial location like a barber shop, and the people wanted to rent out the upstairs, that normally would not be allowed in a commercial district, but with a mixed-use layer, it would allow that. So that's kind of what we focused on for the entirety of that, along with where we should be placing daycares and things of that nature.
There was a lot of extensive conversation both sides.
But the majority of it for those two hours was looking at uses in the county. They've taken, we have a current table in our ordinance, Table five-one, is land uses in the county and where they are permissible, where they're not permissible, and where they're conditional. So they've taken those current uses and expanded it quite immensely, just basically identifying more uses individually. I would say, I can't recall exactly, but there was pages upon pages. So they've, they've added a lot of tables or uses that I think is helpful, that we didn't currently have. When we met with the environmental group, there's a lot of concern for new development, especially within the shoreline, but however, that really segued into, we don't have new development. Most of our lakes are developed right beside the natural environment. So what it actually is, is redevelopment, and a lot of these lakes that are developed are non-conforming in nature for lot sizes. But my opinion is, is what we're seeing is, it's a, it's a transition from people being allowed to work from home and also being able to commute to Fargo. You may only have, what, a thirty-minute drive from the west side of Big Cornrot to their job, where they're now being able to come here and live here. Ma and Pa's little cabin no longer works, so they're trying to expand on that. Everything we, and what was explained to them is everything we have in place, impervious surface and the existing setbacks, I guess are, you know, unless there was an interest to increase setbacks and lower impervious surface, that would be really the only way to remedy their, the environmental concerns. So that's basically what that group focused on. Then also, I did get some comments afterwards from that same group with wakeboard concerns.
Surf boats, not wakeboard.
Yeah.
Wakeboats or bow?
Ballast boats. The suggestion being that they be used a minimum of a thousand feet from shore and minimum of twenty-five feet of depth of water. There was a couple others in there that were given to the consultant. That's been a, they've been lobbying pretty hard for that, I think, at least for the past five, six years. I know they've been down to the capital. I know they've had little town hall group meetings around here, but that and feedlots, which we did discuss as well. The second group, or the second focus group mainly talked about feedlots and identifying the threshold of where they become commercial by number of animal units, if they have the area to pasture and just get rid of manure. So that, that was about an hour-long discussion as well, so.
The thing with the surf boats, a thousand feet is just extreme. When they have scientific data, I said, showing that they want them, you know, they're asking for a thousand feet where it should be. I mean, they say the wave starts dispersing, and then by three hundred feet, it's, I don't, it's not gone, but I think the data shows three hundred feet was the reasonable amount.
And then the twenty-five foot depth?
Yeah, I think fifteen feet is, but I mean, I, I have a surf boat, so I know, I know the thrust, but when you're just driving a surf boat, you're not thrusting down. I mean, you have, you, you, I mean, there's difference of driving it and actual surfing, so you want to make sure you know that difference, too. When you're surfing, there's a, you are then thrust, then you're putting your paddles down to thrust more water down to, so when you're just driving it, it's not, it's not, you don't have your, the paddle, I don't know what you call them, but they're, they go down to thrust to make that wave bigger and put you more. So you'd want to make sure you say, while surfing, you'd want to be at least three hundred feet from.
I mean, is it an issue of the state itself, you know?
Yeah, I think the state should, should be the one saying it, because, I mean, I certainly would support that. I, because you're going to have a tough time getting that information to people that have those boats out on the water. Most people are good on, like on, on Big Cornrot, there's really, I mean, it's, it's not a big issue on Big Cornrot. It's a huge lake, and most, you know, you go all the ways anyway, because you're, you don't want to, because you have to keep moving at a slow rate, and you're, it's, there, to surf, you drive slow. It's not a, there's not a lot of danger in surfing, except.
You know Sally must have.
Go through the channel there by Piggies.
Thousand and a half.
There's nobody surfs in front of you.
You take your salt surfing?
I know. I, I did hear some concern about it. Hold on, like, I believe it was Blueberry, which is a smother.
Yeah. Well, they have a channel that's three hundred feet wide, and if you're surfing through there, you're, you're, and it's shallow, I mean, you're rolling up boats, everything, and, I mean, there's obvious concerns. Now, you should be able to go within ten feet of some people's dock.
You cleaned up my, my beach.
I did sit on that second focus group for about a half hour or so, and it was a good discussion, I thought, from everybody there.
Yeah, and I, and I think, you know, that, that, in my opinion, the Board has identified what they want to focus on, and although a hundred thousand dollars seems like a lot of money, it doesn't really go that far drafting this whole entire plan. I think we could fight about the, maybe not, the word fight isn't the right word, but discuss wake surfing for probably a year in itself and throw data back and forth, but they wanted it included, so.
We have just state regulations for that.
I don't think there's anything specific for surf boats. But Peggy, there's nobody that surfs through the channel there. I mean, I've never seen anyone surfing through. I mean, I think our lake is, they're pretty good.
They come on either, like, they, yeah, they go on either side.
I've never even went in the, in the bay to surf. I mean, we always.
They do a lot. Did they bring up any specific lakes?
They didn't, but I think the focus has primarily been Bad Medicine and Big Sugar Bush is where, you know, a lot of the lobbyists are from. But to my knowledge, I think there's, I think there's only two ballast boats on Bad Medicine, but I could be wrong there, but I, I mean, I don't think they're all over the place, like, they may be on DL or, or Big Cornrot, but.
But it, you know, it does make for fun jet skiing and tubing when you have those going on the lake.
Oh, I, you know, concern was a few years ago, more on the jet skis, the issues, those of wakeboard.
But on Sally, you can't get within, you can't get close to shore in front of John's flays with, I, I mean.
A lot of areas on the Lake South Shore.
Yeah.
Same.
I mean, people, they're, those, I mean, if you have that boat, you're pretty careful where you go, because, you know, you're, I got, I don't, I mean, I get out in deep water to move, so.
Any other thing?
No, I just want to make sure that you guys all each got that text message about that two o'clock meeting today. Those guys really wanted me to.
Chamber just sent out another reminder on it with the Senate bill.
You talking the, the meeting today, or?
Yeah, H-two land stewards, primarily farmers, but now with that new bill, there's going to be a lot of recreational folks up there, I think, as well.
In regard to the meeting today in Ogama.
Yeah, they're meeting right now in Beale.
Chamber sent something?
Cleone.
I don't see.
The bill is attached to it, so.
I didn't.
You got it?
No.
So.
What did you say?
Okay.
Thank you.
We have negotiations starting on the lab, and I see their meetings. Kyle, just a second. I got such basic on some. Hearing none, meeting adjourned. Thanks, everyone.